Slowly loading.
Morning. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting this Tuesday, July 20th, 2021. And with that, I'd like to notify that we have a quorum present with all five commissioners present. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our first order of business is approval of our agenda at this time, commissioners. I would like to amend our agenda by removing Tab P, which is, go to it exactly, my last page. Which is, Tab P is a request approval of the Pareto Cancer Care and Plan Act Access Agreement. So we'll remove that one. Also, just a reminder that when we get into the Tab U, which is the Consider An Act Upon Statutory Requirements of Filling the County Treasurers Vacancy, just momentarily before that, we will have a short executive session to review legal with our attorneys regarding that position. So we'll just have a short executive session. What we'll do, commissioners there is when we go into executive session, the commission will go over to the Castle Rock Room. It'll be easier for us to move and leave the audience here in the chambers, and we'll take our attorney with us and any note takers. So with that, commissioners, anything else regarding the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like executive session to discuss the Ashley National Forest Plan, Pre-Decisional Cooperative.
Okay, very good. We will amend that as well for executive session. So commissioners, anything else? With that, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the two amended, three amended items. First amended item is the removal of Tab P. Second is executive session regarding the statutes for treasurers position. And the third thing is pre-decisional in our regular executive session regarding Ashley Forest.
Mr. Chairman, I would so move.
Commissioner Toman has made motion to approve the agenda with the amendments. Is there a second?
I would say him.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield, I believe. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes of July 6, 2021. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield to approve the minutes of July 6, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. Next on our agenda is the acceptance of the bills. Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I would so move that we approve, we pass the approval of the county vouchers, warrants, ALs, approval of bonds, approval of monthly reports, and the approval of the abates and rebates as presented.
Okay, we have motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the bills, which include the county vouchers and warrants, approval of bonds, monthly reports, and approval of the abates and rebates is our second.
Mr. Chairman, I would second.
We have a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Next up, under Tab C is a public hearing, planning, and zoning, and it's a notice of intent hearing for solar facilities language amendment. And to present that is Mr. Bingham, our planning and zoning director. Good morning, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm the applicant, the land use department. What we're doing today is proposing a notice of intent. So we're not actually passing the regulations, but in accordance with the Administrative Procedures Act with Wyoming statutes, which initiates a 45-day comment period. So anybody can comment on the regulations. But the purpose of these amendments are to come into compliance with Wyoming statutes. As you know, we are an arm of the legislature. We are bound by state statute. And legislature made changes in the solar regulations. They now require Wyoming Industrial Siting Council hearings. And in addition to that, there's some requirements that they have instituted and put on counties to incorporate into their zoning resolution. And so that's what we're doing today. And this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did certify the recommendation 5 to 0. And Commissioner Toman was also there at our, at our meeting. So the purpose, so I'll just really briefly go over the changes, but it affects sections 5, 7, and 21 of our code. And the first change is the title. So we have them titled as Solar Energy Systems Utility Scale as a conditional use. Legislature has changed that to solar facilities. And so you'll see that when you go through the language. So I'm going to scroll down. I won't go through every change, but we had to go into our code and then make those changes accordingly. So in there, you can see that what's red, strike out, and then what's added in blue is we've changing the name of it to match statute. The other thing that changed is the certification requirements. You see this in the wind regulations. So our application requirements had to change. And so what an applicant will need to do now, similar with wind energy, is certify that all landowners within a mile of the facility are notified of the proposed solar facility, and all cities and towns within 20 miles. So that's a pretty big requirement. So if there's a solar facility within 20 miles, they get notified of the, of the application. They have to certify the notice of the hearing. They have to certify that it meets all our zoning regulations. They have to certify an emergency management plan and a reclamation and decommissioning, and certify that there's no advertising on any of the solar facility, and certify legal access. The biggest change, so right now our setbacks are 50 feet from all property lines. And the changes legislature made was it needs to be 200 feet from a public right-of-way zoned agriculture. So that's a big change from 50 feet. Another thing is 100 feet from all other lands. So if it's industrial or commercial zoned, it's 100 feet. And another one is 100 feet from outer boundary of the facility. So if they create this boundary, it has to even be another 100 feet inside that boundary. The other thing that they allow the counties to do, and this is probably to address the antelope migration issue that we had on this last project, is the county can increase setbacks for known big game migration corridors to reduce vehicle collisions. And that's right out of statute. So everything that you're seeing and all the changes you're seeing are what's in statute. And then, of course, we had to change our definition to match statute. And so the way we defined a solar commercial facility was .25 megawatts. And we are now increasing that to .5 megawatts to match statute. And Mr. Chairman, that's all that I have. And open for any questions. Again, these changes were directly drawn out of state statute. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Commissioners, any questions, comments? Commissioner Toman?
Well, I'd like to thank the legislature for incorporating the changes. I understand our solar site was one of the first in the state, and it did have big issues. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Yeah. Other comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah, I just want to commend your department and the, the Planning and Zoning Committee for bringing this and conforming it to statutes. And, and I think it's a good start from the legislative side also in regulating solar and such. So thank you, Eric, and your department and your, and the Planning and Zoning Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other comments, commissioners? No other comments? Mr. Bingham?
Yes.
I, I know when we align things with statute, our county attorney's offices look this over and feels comfortable that the changes are aligned with statute?
Yeah. Eric, Eric did a good job.
Did a good job. Okay. Good job.
Thanks.
Quite a lot of confidence there.
Are we gonna, we gotta change your, change your, put some letters behind your name? One of them is pseudo attorney?
Yeah. Common law.
Attorney. That's funny. That's funny. Anyhow, but thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, so what I'm asking the Board of County Commissioners to do, do today is sign a notice of intent. Mr. Chairman, we're not approving the language. We are just signing a notice of intent.
So that take a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, before we, before we sign that, I'd like to just comment also thanking the legislature for, you know, helping us with this. As Commissioner Toman has pointed out, there have been a number of issues with our first solar project, and this will help with any future ones. Will these changes impact the expansion that's going on out there here in the near future?
For the Raven?
Yeah, for the Raven.
Yes, it will.
It will, thank you.
Yep.
All right, very good. Any other comments, commissioners? All right, so commissioners, I guess we would, I'd entertain a motion for a letter. Pardon? Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Point of order. Public hearing. We will now have any public comment regarding these amendment changes. So I'll open the floor for public hearing. Comments regarding the recommendation for this letter of intent to look at the changes in the planning and zoning. Floor is now open. I thought everybody was here for just this. I was wrong. Fairly enough. Any public comment? Last call. Floor is closed for public comment. At this time, commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding approving a letter of intent for the?
Notice of intent.
Notice of intent. Thank you for the amendment changes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Toman to sign the notice of intent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, with that, our next agenda item, is that it, Eric?
Yes.
It is. Okay, very good. Our next agenda item will be county resident concerns. And at this time, I will give the floor to any county resident concerns. If anybody wishes to comment, make comments, please come forward to the podium, and please state your name and what you, who you are and what you represent. How's that sound?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. My name is Clark Stith, House District 48, members of the commission. Thank you so much. I'm here not for any particular event, just to sort of say hello. I think it's good to have ongoing communication. Yesterday, the Joint Appropriations Committee met in Cheyenne's. We had an all-day meeting, and the big topic is what to do with the American Rescue Plan Act funds. It's about $1 billion that the state gets. And perhaps somewhat surprisingly, I don't have a lot of new information to report in the sense that plans are somewhat still amorphous about what to do with that money, which is good news in the sense that if you have particular projects that you'd like to see done, getting that message to the governor's office, getting it to legislative leadership, there's still time to do that. The train hasn't left the station, so to speak. So what's big picture of that billion dollars, it looks like about $500 million can be used for so-called revenue shortfall at the state level. The impact of that is that, that effectively allows half of this billion dollars to be essentially transformed from federal dollars with federal strings. You can essentially use it for so-called revenue shortfall and transform it into general funds that you can spend on anything. So it's kind of a, well, whatever euphemism you want to have for that. So, and then the other half of the half billion dollars, about $500 million, has to be spent for the ARP designated uses, and that's water, sewer, broadband, and tourism, essentially. So we're pretty narrow categories, right? So that's a lot of money for broadband, for water, sewer, and things. The, again, it's, there's, there's a, the, it's my understanding that the governor's office, through a kind of so-called strike force, that doesn't involve some people from legislative leadership, is getting together every couple of weeks to try to hash out what are good ideas and bad ideas. One idea I'd like to talk with you about, that I'm trying to push, is relates to ambulance service, because ambulance service is not just a problem here. It's a problem all across the state for a lot of rural areas. And to me, it seems, it's always seemed a bit strange. For example, if the county ends up subsidizing ambulance service and the cities don't, that's just odd that you get saddled with the burden of that. One potential proposal that I'm trying to sell the legislature, perhaps you, and, and the cities on, is to the extent that you have a private ambulance service provider, and business isn't very good for them. In other words, they're, they're operating at a loss, which is why they want money from you each year. It might be a lot more efficient if a municipality or a hospital or a fire department should choose to do so for them, frankly, to take over that service, right? Fire department in particular, because I'm more familiar with Rock Springs. Frankly, we already have nine EMTs who are on, on duty 24/7, 365, and they're called firefighters, right? But they're all trained. There would be one-time costs associated with it, and that's where these ARP funds come in. You could take, have a pot of money, say 30, 40, 50 million statewide, that a participating local government that wanted to take over the local ambulance service, the state could pitch in for the 3, 4, 5 million it might take to get it set up, up and running, right? And then maybe your fire department, instead of being a, an entity that protects you against fire and responds to first responders but doesn't generate revenue, maybe that could become a revenue generating entity. That is, you achieve some efficiencies. So just something to think about. I think that idea is worth pursuing, and it'd be nice to have the support of the commissioners and the Wyoming County Commissioners Association, too, because that way, take the burden off the counties potentially for participating cities. And you have this fund because there would be one-time expenses. So that's just one particular idea. One of many other, lots of people have lots of other ideas. There was for the South Baxter Road project, which is, you've done a lot of work for the design on that. It was certainly qualified, right, as a water sewer project, right? It's a water project, getting water to the airport to send plot to Arrowhead Springs. It's so far, it's still pretty much up in the air, whether that's going to be, whether when the legislative session meets in February, whether that's going to just be like on a list of projects that you can sort of jostle for, or whether there'll be more of a model where you give the money to SLIB, and SLIB will then, upon application, decide who to give grants to. That's the other kind of, conceptually, the process. I'm pretty sure that the legislature and that whatever process does get set up is going to favor those local government entities that are willing to put some of their own money in the game. So that's there, too. So I apologize that that's a bit perhaps vague, but the governor has sort of, in greed and good faith, even though he has the statutory power as of September 1st of 2021, he's got the statutory power now to just spend this billion dollars on whatever he feels like, essentially. There's sort of a good faith agreement that he's not going to do so until the legislature gets together in February. So we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
Any, any questions? And having said all that, any questions for me?
Thank you, Representative Stith. Commissioners, any questions for Representative Stith?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah. First of all, Clark, I feel like it's been a long time since we've seen you, so I appreciate the update. You always do a great job in coming back from legislative sessions, legislative sessions and updating us. You and I have had a chance to talk about that ambulance proposal a couple of times in private discussions. And I know, if I remember right, it's more based upon maybe transitioning from like a fire department, being able to have some of those funds. What if like a hospital entity, would that, would it would kind of be worked cross-section with a situation like that also? And just really any kind of those municipality, not municipality, but public service type entities would be able to receive that transitional money under your proposal, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lloyd, that's, that's exactly right. You'd want this to be pretty flexible. And, you know, I, as I, you know, this is just an idea, so I don't know what the interest would be across the state. But I think it's not just, but I think there's, this could, this idea could get traction because it's not just a problem that affects Sweetwater County, but all across the state.
And Representative Stith, I agree, because I'm not quite sure, but the last I, I think I knew, I don't think Fremont, Fremont County had a provider at this point, because I know July 1st was going to be their last day with no even proposed new providers. So I don't know if there was an extension with the other, but I know they, there are multiple counties right now that were in, probably even a higher dire situation with ambulance than we were. So good work on that. I do support those concepts.
Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? I got a couple of questions, please, Clark. Thank you. First of all, when you talk about this ARC money to go towards supporting these, I'll just say public safety, because that's what they all come under, whether it's ambulance or fire, that. It seems to me that pot of money is soft money. It eventually is going to go away. And then the weight of funding those, that ambulance or fire, where do you see that laying on? Where do you, I mean, it's a good idea, but looking down the road a ways, when this soft money goes away, then what? What's, where does, where does responsibility for funding these in your eyes go?
Right. And Commissioner Wenley, that, that's a great point, because these are one-time funds.
Yeah.
Not recurring funds. They have to all be spent, obligated by December 31st of 2024, and actually spent by December 31st of 2026. And then after that, the money's gone.
It's gone.
So that's why I think for ambulance, it might make a lot of sense, because ambulances do generate some revenue. They, they don't just operate for free, right? They do charge for their services. It's, it's just that, under the current model, it's not a great business to be in. And in 2020 in particular, it was probably a really terrible business as a private ambulance company to be in. Right now, we've got, just to use the fire department in Rock Springs as an example, they've got a five or six million dollar budget, right? They're spending a lot of money, but they're not generating any revenue. If you could essentially, without having to hire too many more people, you know, you'd have that same payroll. You've already trained these people to be EMTs. But there would be this one-time transition cost for purchasing ambulances and equipment and things like that.
And that's pending if Rock Springs wanted to take it over.
Right. That would be, yeah, exactly.
They've got to make a long-term commitment for, as well as then what happens here, here in Green River and that type of thing. So, yeah, there's, there's some beyond thinking that has to go into this. And I, and I'm, I'm, I think out of the box, I agree with Commissioner Lloyd. It's a great concept and everything else. But what happens? Where does it come back to? Who's laid on after the soft money goes away?
Well, as you may-
Which is hard to answer right now.
Well, as you may recall, using Rock Springs as an example, when that's current ambulance service provider in Rock Springs first got into the game, their, their promise to the entities was that they would not ask for a subsidy at all, because they wouldn't need one, because they make money on ambulance service. That was the pitch at that time.
Went from making money to bankruptcy to hopefully breaking even, right?
So, again, a lot of things would have to fall into place. So I think, I think it's probably present easier sell to the commissioners and the county commissioners association than perhaps to the municipalities.
All right. Anyhow, thank you for that. Just one more question.
Sure.
You say that, for instance, with regard to these ARC projects for water and sewer, you say the governor is taking, governor's office is taking requests now?
Mr. Chairman, as a practical matter, yes, that's right. It's a really squishy, amorphous process right now, okay?
Yeah, I'm with you.
I was asking that question yesterday. I asked a point blank to the governor's policy director. I said, hey, if you have an idea, how do we get that idea vetted? And, and, you know, theoretically, spending money is a legislative function, right? So you could expect the legislature to be taking the lead on this and, and, and really grabbing the bull by the horns, or maybe the legislature falls asleep. But anyway, right?
Right.
So I think, so as you have, Rennie McKay is the policy director inside the governor's office. And then I, I know that House Speaker Eric Barlow and, and, and House Appropriations Committee Chairman Bob Nicholas are part of this strike force. So if, if there's an idea, so, and I think of the South Baxter Road project in particular, right, getting that to somebody inside the governor's office to think, well, what's the process for this? I was, I was also sort of informally given the word that for the, for the Baxter Road project, and I don't know who the applicant would be, the applicant might be the Joint Powers Water Board, if they would be the owner of that project eventually. But to get an application in through the existing mechanisms, even if there's no money there, just so that you're in the queue, and I don't know if the Joint Powers Water Board has already done that or not.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the middle Baxter project's on the radar. I agree with you in some way and how. But what have, what else interests me as much as important is we have three small entities, special districts out in our county, water and sewer districts, and we got more than three. We have three of them right now that are struggling and needing update, whether it's sewer, water, or both. And both, all three of them, at one level or another, have an economic development impact, i.e. Reliance Water and Sewer, Jamestown Water and Sewer, and Clearview Water and Sewer. In some way and how we've, I ask these questions because I think these projects need to be in the governor's office as well. And that's why I ask, how do we get these projects in the governor's office? Who's the contact? And if, if you know of anybody?
Yeah, my primary contact right now is Rennie McKay.
Rennie McKay, and I know Rennie, so I may give-
Policy Director, although they may be, I also got the impression that they're sort of divvying this up by subject matter area. So for example, for broadband, there's a separate team that's working on that, the broadband task force, et cetera. So, but it's still, I guess the good news is, it's still early enough in the process to have an impact on it. I think we need to get our, get our voice heard. And so to the extent there's a specific description about what Reliance needs, or Jamestown-
Yeah.
Or Clearview acres, I'd be interested in getting whatever information the county's got about that, too, just so that we're all on the same page, pulling, pulling together.
And they've been, yeah, and they've been before us and talked to us, especially a year ago when we did the six panel. The exception, that didn't come forward was Clearview. But I think, I, I think as I look through, through the county and us as county commissioners, we need to keep an eye on all of those and, and make sure that some way and how we get them on the radar for this particular pot of money. So, all right, I, I'll start with Rennie McKay, then. I think I've heard a good name and that type of thing. But anyhow, any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Representative. We appreciate you coming to see us this morning, and welcome anytime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clark. Any other public comment? If there's any other public comment, please come to the podium. Tell us your name and who you're with. Public comment. Good morning, Devin. Last call, public comment, anything online? Very good. With that, I'll close the public comment period. And would like to thank everybody for being here. Okay, here we go. We're going to our action and presentation items. And I think you'll realize when you look at the agenda that generally at this time, we move into commissioners' comments or reports. That's been moved to the end of our agenda. So we can move right away into our action items so that people that need to get back to their place of business, they can, and that type of thing. So with that, first up, it's Tab D. It's a submittal of letters of support and proposal to the Rocky Mountain Power and Terra, and Terra Power for Nature and Project. And here to talk with us about that and bring us up to date is Mr. Bingham, out of our planning and zoning, and out of SEDC as well. And also out of SEDC is Kayla McDonald. So please come forward to the podium and introduce yourselves. Everybody knows who you are. And the floor is yours, Mr. Bingham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments are going to be brief, and then I'll turn it over to Kayla. I just wanted to thank everybody involved. It was quite the process getting it all together. Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield and Kayla McDonald for getting that spreadsheet and getting it organized, because that coordinated effort, that was very important. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for letting me hunt you down on your vacation for a signature. I appreciate that. So, and everybody's signing. And thank you, Representative Stith also. Is he still here? Nope. What's that? He left. Well, thank you, representatives and the senators that did sign the letters of support. So I just, I was very impressed how everybody came together, all the communities, along with the colleges and the school districts. Laybus that also submitted a letter of support. And every, and the air- And every, and the airport, Mr. Brubaker is here, sent all these letters of support. It just shows you when everybody comes together, what can happen. And the proposal was phenomenal in that amount of time. So I just want to thank everybody involved and appreciate it. And I'll turn it over to Kayla.
Thank you, Eric. Good morning, Kayla. Welcome.
Good morning. As Eric has stated, we, we did put a really good proposal together. I'm very proud of that. I do want to make sure that we, we add some additional thank yous to this. This proposal was paid for with the support of travel and tourism, and Janessa Meredith and her Board of Directors there. Also Kaylee Hughes, she's also staffed at Sweetwater now. She has an excellent design mind, and so we tapped right into her, got her on the, on the list here to help us. And so she did really good and quick turnaround, and she's probably tired of hearing from me and everybody else wanting changes, but she did great. So on this project, what we did is we captured everything from quality of life, education, healthcare, into recreation and our community profile. And then we highlighted some available properties, which we felt were really key to this as well. We wanted to make sure that if they needed a location for headquarters, more available space for maybe even storage of, you know, equipment, things of that nature, we have that abundance. As we've even talked about in the past, we have a large amount of available properties, blessing and a curse, but for us, it's probably going to be a good thing going forward. So we submitted the Halliburton location, the Slumber Jay location out on Yellowstone, which just got listed in the process of doing this. And then Knight Oil Tools, which I believe is getting ready to subdivide, so that can also help. And then we highlighted Middle Baxter. We felt like this could be a potential for us, too. It's pretty close in proximity to the site of the Jim Bridger Power Plant. So we made sure to highlight that. We gave them the executive summary to show that we've done a lot of research. We have all of the information done on this property. So that was part of it as well. Also, in this proposal, if you, you want me to, I can roll through it. If not, we can, you've looked at it. But in the proposal, we, we made the case that the college has a great workforce training program, which Dr. Dale did an excellent letter, and she captured everything that they're willing to put forth as far as a program. So I think we did a very good job showing Sweetwater County and that we're ready and willing to embrace a historic possibility here in Wyoming. So.
Before I put questions out there, Commissioners, Kayla, do you have that?
I do, yes.
You know, some of us are very fortunate to see it, but I don't believe it's been totally shared 100% with the public. So if you have an opportunity to just bring it up and highlight parts of it, please, so that everybody can see it. Commissioner Shanefield?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say thank you to SEDC as a whole as well, and all of the cities. I think that, I mean, even when we had Terra Power and Rocky Mountain Power here, they came into the room and, and they told us that they could feel the energy. And I think that that's a really strong thing with our group. I think that we've proven over and over again that we're willing to put any egos aside and work together. I think that this is a great example of that. And I also want to thank Dr. Dale, our school districts, both of them, all of our healthcare as well. And so, I mean, we got great information from everybody involved. And I think that that's really important. And that shows all industries, not just Rocky Mountain Power and Terra Power, that we're open for business here in Sweetwater County. And I think that this is just key on what SEDC has been able to bring to the forefront for our community in bringing in potential industries and helping grow the industries that we have here currently. And the energy that we have is, is really something, and I'm excited about that moving forward. I also want to say that this proposal, even if we don't get the first or second, or, you know, with, with this Natrium project, we have this proposal now for anybody else that we are going to potentially try to bring into our community. So it's awesome. Great job, guys.
I agree 100%. SEDC really took the front initiative and, and it was a combination of both cities as well as every member of SEDC, that board members working together and, and really putting this together. And of course, feet on the ground, Kayla and Carley and Eric and, of course, Lauren with oversight, Commissioner Shanefield. It was a, it was a great project, came together wonderfully, and I'm, I'm really proud of it. I really am, I, as County Commissioner, really proud of the work that's been done and how the county is being represented in this. So I think it's very important to show it. So people that are, happened to be with us this morning, get an opportunity to see the quality of work that was put together and, and what it is we listed. And what was really unique is once this thing was, once this was presented to Rocky Mountain and, and the Natrium organization, it was surprising how many other counties found out about it. And they immediately tried to, well, replicate. I don't know what the replication looks like, but I, I, I think we should be proud of what we have and be glad that people are listening to us and following our lead. I think that's great. So good job. Share it with us, please.
Yeah, that is correct. We were the only ones that did submit a proposal, so everybody else is kind of following after us. So we're leading again. And they did do site visits. Let me add that, too. Last week, they visited all four sites, Glen Rock, Gillette, Kemmer, and Rock Springs. So. All right. So what we did is we titled our proposal, Empowering the Heartbeat of America. Beautiful picture, landscape, so you can see wide open spaces here. We made sure to put it front and center. Our Board of County Commissioners signed a letter of support. So thank you to all of you guys. Like Eric said, we had to track down a couple of you and make sure we got you on there. Included table of contents, listing of our attachments. And then we went right into the education and workforce. We had a lot of this data already compiled. We just wanted it a little bit more in a professional format than what we've had in the past. We, we've really kind of struggled. And that was one thing that SEDC has been really trying to do is capture everything, get it done, so we're not scrambling last minute. So did a really good job highlighting workforce development. And then our recreation. And we really appreciated all of the information that came from travel and tourism for this as well. They had some great feedback for us on this. And then quality of life, we highlighted retail, everything from what our community encompasses, from parks to everything that Sweetwater County does for, like your outdoor recreation piece and going into IAB corridor, transportation, that's a key. We have rail, we have over the road. So we highlighted all that in there as well. Healthcare, we made sure to highlight Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County. And we highlighted all of their services in what they have recently added. We highlighted that they also have expanded in the last few years, showing that our, our county is committed to healthcare and making sure that our residents are taken care of. Aspen Mountain Medical Center, we highlighted them as well. It's another key component of Sweetwater County's healthcare. And also healthcare in Green River. So Castle Rock and Bailey and her team, thank you for everything you guys provided for us as well, showing the most recent brand new building and the beautiful facility that we have here for our residents. And then our available properties. As I said, we, we made sure to highlight these large-scale buildings. They're huge. They're perfect for what could be a potential manufacturer or headquarters. So hi, we did Halliburton, Slumber Jay. And into Knight Oil Tools. This is Slumber Jay. This is a beautiful building, great location for something going forward for, like I said, manufacturing or of the like. And then Middle Baxter. Made sure to put that in there. And these go into the executive summary that we provided for the Middle Baxter project. So that shows all the work that's been done. This is a great snapshot. It is crooked, but it went in that way. And then we do have all of the letters of support following a nice capture recreation piece from travel and tourism that they use for kind of a recruitment piece for people coming into the county for tourism. And then county profile. So this is everything from demographics into housing. You name it. It's a great piece that the Department of Economic Analysis for the state puts together for every county. So that is available for every county. So that's everything. And I'll take questions and comments.
Thank you. And just to remind everyone, this was done with, what, within six days?
Pretty close, yeah.
Pretty close to six days. And, and many of the people involved in helping get this done were not home. They had to get, be gotten a hold of. So everything was done through, through the use of technology and, and that type of thing. So I mean, it's just amazing from finish, from start to finish, and where people were and the need of people, how this came together. So if you weren't in the middle of, of seeing it happen or part of it, making it happen, you don't realize what all went into this. But I think it's a very, very good end product. I think it's quality. And I'd just like to thank SEDC, Kayla, Eric, your board members, Devon's here, and I'm looking at, and of course Lauren. And we know that there's some members not here, Tim Como from the city and, and from Green River, Reed Clevenger. And we've got one other, a couple of the board, Marty Corolo. And who else am I missing?
We have Dr. Kimberly Dale from the college and Janessa Meredith.
And Janessa Meredith. Thank you very much. So all those people jumped right in and made it happen within a short amount of time. Good job, quality product. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Not a question, but a comment. It was great to see, as I, as I looked at, and love Kemmer, but to see their presentation was, they were a great place to be, come here. And that was like literally their, their presentation. So to have something like this, just kudos. That was, it was great to, to see our presentation. Very proud of it. And whoever they choose, you know, I guess they'll choose who they choose, but we put our best foot forward. And, and there's still some work to do, obviously, between now and the end of the year, and I'm sure we'll do more. So thank you. Thank you for doing it for everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Other comments, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lloyd.
I, you know, I wasn't really going to say anything, but I think we, we'd be, I'd be remiss not to commend the work that was done, because, you know, we often talk about the importance of diversifying our economy, and this shows an opportunity that's presented itself. And it just shows that we've gone all in, and we've pushed hard toward it. We've had a combined effort. I think this shows how some of the partnerships we're fostering through the Intergovernmental Group can have a positive end. And I think everyone that was involved in the project deserves tons of props. And I think it's, it's a great way to show that we are invested and wanting to diversify the economy in the, in this changing world we're in. And, and I just think of, I think Jeff's right. This is a great product. And I think one of the things that Lauren said that's significant is we now have a base tool to work for other places. So another recruitment option. So great job to everyone involved. And it's exciting to be part of this time. And, and, you know, and I, and I think we've, and I think, I think we've put our best foot forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other comments, Commissioners?
Just thank you. It was great.
Thank you.
It was very great.
All right. Thank you very much, Kayla. Appreciate the work you did in this and continue moving forward. Thank you.
I think I'm the next piece, too, so I'll just stay right here.
So if you just, yes, you're exactly right. Next up on our agenda is approval of the MOU between the City of Rock Springs, Green River, and Sweetwater County for SEDC fiscal year 2122. And Ms. McDonald, again, is here to present that. And before you present it, Commissioners, I think in our packet, we're missing page two of the MOU. Had Sally send it out yesterday. Everybody should have received it. And it's probably the most important page as the, as our just, our our deputy attorney, when I was visiting with him, was when we caught it, is, it's the page that tells how much things cost.
Yeah, that's true. So my apologies. I don't know what happened.
Immediately, we, we needed to get out another notice. So so I'll share with the public that, you know, in our packet on Friday, page two wasn't there. So Kayla, I'd like you to emphasize what the costs are.
Yes.
When we, as you present this, please. All right. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Yeah. So this MOU is similar, is I believe everything that we've, we've agreed to, even when we moved SEDC to the chamber, from the chamber to the county. We've made some adjustments. Thirty thousand apiece between the two cities and the county has been agreed upon again. So what we've done is we've highlighted in here, the schedule of how those will be billed out quarterly. And we'll make sure that we get you the right copy if we haven't already. So our responsibilities basically are to just continue with business retention, recruitment, highlighting our Middle Baxter project as one of our initiatives that came out of our most recent strategic plan meeting that we did. We've also looked at some entrepreneur development. So a lot of what we are doing going forward is captured in here. And the basis of this MOU just agrees between the three entities that it'll fund. And basically, that's all I have on that part, unless you have questions. But it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's a spot, basically the same MOU, MOUs we've had in the past, and the shared costs, same amount. And the only thing that's changed is our dates and, and that type of thing. Mr. Deleon, you've had an opportunity to review it?
Yeah, so there's, there's a 90-day termination process available. If need to change or modify as things continue to develop, you have that opportunity as well.
Thank you, Mr. Deleon. Questions, Commissioners? Just comments. Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to highlight that we are, and Kayla just mentioned this, but we're working through strategic planning for the upcoming year. And so I think that's important. And we also are working towards the 501(c)(3) option, which gives us a lot of different opportunities within that group. So I wanted to just make sure that the Commission was aware of that. If there's any questions, Kayla and Eric, and we can answer those. But they are starting to work through that process and getting that taken care of. I know that was a key initiative that we had talked about when we moved over to the county. And I think that the group has been very supportive of that. And we're working through the things that we had on our to-do list. So it's exciting.
Good. I think so. Very good. Other comments, questions, Commissioners? No further comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding this memorandum of understanding between the City of Rock Springs, City of Green River, and Sweetwater County?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield?
I would like to make a motion to approve the MOU as presented and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the MOU as presented and authorize the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to second that.
We got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Up next on our agenda will be the, oh, no, that's not it. We have a moche, no, no, yeah, is a catering permit for Red Feather Incorporated, Red Feather Sloan, DBA, Red Feather Bar, and Doing Businesses, Red, Red Feather Bar, and Peces Liquor, subject to all required municipal approvals. And to present that is our clerk, Ms. Cindy Lane. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning, Chairman Wenley.
Thank you.
Commissioners. Yes, as you've said, we have a motion to approve a catering permit for a wedding through Red Feather Inc. Doing Business as Red Feather Bar. The wedding event will take place on July 24th at 229 Old Stauffer Road in Green River. It is subject to obtaining all required municipal approvals as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Questions, Commissioners? Comments? What's your pleasure regarding the approval of this catering permit for Red Feather Incorporated and authorizing chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we approve the catering permit request as presented.
We have a motion to approve the catering permit.
And allow the chairman to sign.
As presented and allowing the chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion?
What do you think they're serving, Ms. Lane?
Liquor.
Thank you, Ms. Commissioner Toman. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, I just had to add that because you told me not to.
That's good. Next up is a security, I'm sorry, next up is a security assessment and domain change. And here to present that is our IT Director, Mr. Knight. Good morning. Morning, Mr. Knight.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So the Department of Homeland Security has a agency called the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency. They provide services to public sector and private entities to try to protect the critical infrastructure of the country. They offer some services that I'd like to engage in. And I wanted to approve, get approval from you to, to go ahead with that and get authorization, and I can represent the county in signing the paperwork to, to engage these services as we do them. So the services I'm looking at doing are a cyber resilience review. That's like a six-hour review process where they interview. That's like a six-hour review process where they interview different people and go through and, and give us recommendations from that. The cyber hygiene vulnerability scanning, where they would scan our, our systems and see if there's any holes or anything that we can do there. And also a phishing campaign where they would engage in some fake phishing attack and see how, how well we do and kind of give us some opportunity to learn from that. So they are recommending this, the Wyoming Secretary of State's office is recommending it, as well as Warm, which is our insurance. And, and I would like to, to go ahead with that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Knight. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Toman?
Is there a cost?
No, there's no cost to us at all.
That's great. Yeah, we're all in. Commissioner Smith, did you have any comment?
Yeah.
That was it? Yeah, I just looked at, that was, that would have been my only comment too, because there's.
And no cost?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Other questions, Commissioner Toman?
I read that you said you would have to do a domain change, where we all have to change our email address to .gov then?
Yeah, so that's a different issue, but that's, that's the next discussion. But yeah, we'll, we'll talk about that one next.
Okay, let's just get this one first, and then we'll come to that one. Okay, Commissioner Toman? All right, commissioners, what's your, what's your pleasure in approving and authorizing Mr. Knight to represent the county and signing the paperwork to engage in C I S A services?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd?
I would so move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve that Mr. Knight be au, be authorized to represent the county in signing the paperwork necessary to engage in C I S A and services provided. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I would so second.
We got a second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, Tim, next be a part of this.
All right, the next issue. So it's, it's been recommended to us by, by C I S A, the Cybersecurity Infrastructure Security Agency, and by the Secretary of State's office, that we move to the .gov domain instead of the .us domain. That's, it's quite a, quite an undertaking to do. The state did go through this a few years ago. The idea is that .gov domains signify to the public that you are an authentic government agency, and then, you know, I think it's with, with all of this misinformation out there, they just want to make sure our sites all kind of represent that. So it does mean that our email addresses will change, our website will change, and, and that's quite a process. So, but you know, we can do it, we can have both domains active for a period of time, then we get the transition done. It doesn't mean we have to change cards and stuff. I expect that this will take about a year to, to accomplish. And so first of all, I guess, do we want to do it? And second of all, do you want input into what that domain needs to be? I gave some suggestions that we could possibly go with. I like to keep them short because you have to type those in as an email, so, and your website. So that's, that's what I would like to see, but I'm interested in your, your comments and questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knight. Commissioners, comments, questions regarding the domain change? I know, Smith, Commissioner Smith?
Cost associated with this?
There won't be any cost to change the domain, other than business cards changing, advertising, things like that. So the website, I, I don't, I think it'll be pretty minimal of anything, but to actually get the domain won't cost us anything.
And then, I like the sweety.gov. It's closest to what we currently have with the sweet dot W Y dot U S, so.
Okay.
That's.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the S W C dot gov, just because it's so short, but I agree with Commissioner Smith as well. And then my other question for you, actually scratched that, I don't remember what I was going to ask.
What was that?
What was that?
Oh, no, I was just going to make the statement that I, I know the business councils worked towards this, that it really is, it's important for our security, and I think that it, I think it's a good move. I know it's a big lift, but I think we do need to take care of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question from.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, Tim, my question would be, you know, you're the I T guy. Do you see this as a high important change to move to the .gov for security reasons? Or do you not see it as a needed move? What is your opinion as our I T professional?
My opinion is that we should do it. I think for the reasons that it presents what, that, that we are a government agency, and it's the direction that, that we've been asked to do, so I think we should do it.
Thank you, I would support it then, if that's what you support. And as far as my opinion on which one to go with, whatever, it's just whatever works best. I mean, so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other comments?
Maybe go S W C, so it saves, changes, saves us like a half a cent on the business cards we're printing, I don't know. So, there we go.
All righty. First of all, I, I sense there's an agreement that, you know, for all the right reasons, we should change to the .gov. Is that correct, commissioners?
Yes.
It is, but doesn't that kind of highlight to the hackers that, oh, good, this is a government agency, we should go after them?
There is, there is that as well, but we already present as a government agency, so we're already getting hit in that realm, so.
All right, you, you, you realize, I heard you say it's a pretty big lift.
It is.
Yeah, for you and your team, and you recommended we should do this. So I'm going to presume that looking ahead, you see all the things that need to be done, and your team does too, and we can get to the end with good work.
We'll make it work, yeah.
All righty. So commissioners, I think probably I'd entertain a motion that we change the domain. Okay, before we do, we decide on what the domain was before I entertain that motion. What do you want for, I hear too with sweet W Y dot gov. I've heard also a little support for S W C dot gov. I know where Lauren and Jeff are, because you're both sweet dot gov.
I like that S W C dot gov.
I also. I like the shortness of S W.
Jeff? You don't care? Roy?
I'm all completely okay with whatever .gov.
That's where I am. Just tell me what, just tell me what you want.
All right, what we'll do is, I will try for S W C dot gov. At the time I checked, it was available, but it could change after this meeting. If that doesn't happen.
The W Y in there.
Yeah, see, someone might buy out from underneath this.
Devon's willing to sell it.
All right, I think, I think S W C dot gov, if it's available, and if it's not, let's go with sweet W Y dot gov. Okay, is that all right, commissioners? All right, I'll entertain a motion from commission to authorize Mr. Knight to move forward with the process of domain change and moving it to first option, S W C dot gov, and second option is S sweet W Y dot gov.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Shanefield to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Discussion. Mr. Knight, will there be requiring any signatures to get this done on any documents?
Not that I know of.
All right, so I would also then say authorize Mr. Knight to sign any necessary documents. You okay with that in your motion? Okay, so now we have an amended motion of approving the domain change with those two options, one and two, as well as giving you, authorizing you to sign any necessary documents, so it doesn't get held up. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Smith. Any other further discussion? Thank you, Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next up is airport funding request timing discussion. And here to talk to us about that is Mr. Brubaker, Executive Director of the Airport. Good morning, Devon.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and I bought all five of those domains already, so sorry about that.
Just out of curiosity, what do they cost?
Well, they cost me $9.99. I'm not quite sure what they'll cost you guys.
All right, thank you.
Just joking.
Okay, go ahead. The floor is yours regarding your funding discussion.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm here today to present a request on behalf of the Airport Board. Traditionally, the airport request, it's funding from the county twice during the year, once in July and once in January. And with our terminal project and the large invoices we'll receive from our contractors, it's our request that we draw down that money one time at the beginning of the fiscal year. It's a million, 17,000 and change. I don't remember the exact number. Usually I do, and I'm terrible about it this morning. And once again, the reason for that is just cash flowing the terminal project at this point, because we have to wait for grants to come in while we have large amounts of grants, they're all reimbursable grants. So we have to get our contractors paid in a timely manner. So the money being in upfront would allow us to be able to cash flow the project. No additional money being requested, I want to be clear about that, no additional money, just doing it once. We don't have a formal agreement on how often we do this with the county. We technically, I guess by the book, could have, especially spot, talking to your staff, could have just done it, but being a large amount of money, I didn't want to just put the request in and have it run through the process. I did talk to Bonnie, and I did talk to Rob prior to his departure, and both were okay with the decision to do this. That was on the encouragement of the chairman to talk to them. They thought it was a wise decision with our cash flow issues we'll have for the terminal. Rob thought it was actually a very good investment for the county. He said, I could use those exact words with you all. He said he wouldn't, obviously wouldn't be here to provide those himself, but that's really the request, is just putting it out there and saying, we would like to draw this down all at once. Neither had an issue with it. Rob did say there's enough liquid assets for the county to cover the full amount, that there would not need to be any changes in any of the investments or short-term CDs or anything like that of the county. So that's really it, and happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Devon. Commissioners, any questions? With no questions, I don't think it takes a motion or anything to do it, it's just information. If we can support it, I would just say, we'll let him know. Okay, we got thumbs up. All right, taken care of. Okay, you can move forward and we'll know, and we'll let Bonnie know.
All right, appreciate that. Yeah.
All right, next up on our agenda is item I is a federal aviation administration airport improvement program grant agreement, and also to present that is Mr. Brubaker.
I wish I could, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I wish I could say this is getting old coming before you to ask for your approval of federal grants, but here we are for another grant for the terminal project. This one is just a hair over $7.9 million. Once again, 100% federal. There is no local match on this grant. It does not increase the amount that the county or the city have already contributed to the project or will contribute to the project. This grant is the second of three federal grants coming for this project overall. The third grant will be a million dollars, and that will be coming sometime in 2022 or 2023. The timing is, we're at the mercy of the F A and Congress at this point, but it, it is coming, it's our entitlement fund, so it's a, it's a guaranteed funding source for the airport. And then if I might just briefly let you all know where we're at with the project, if you come to the airport the first week of August, you will see construction fence up, and you will see earth-moving machines ripping up the parking lots for the rental cars and for the employee lots to make way for the two expansions on the building. So we are about 12 days away from breaking ground officially. We are working on scheduling, I hope to have emails out today, working on scheduling a formal groundbreaking ceremony with our congressional delegation, governor's office, you all, other dignitaries and, and V I Ps that have helped make this process happen. Obviously, the public would be invited as well. We're shooting for the August recess for Congress, so we can try to get all three of our congressional delegation there. Obviously, it's going to be tough to manage all of those schedules, so we will do our best and try to get as many people there as possible. So this is another one of those digital grants, so it's already in your inbox, Chairman. And so once, if it's approved, if it's approved by the board, you would sign it, it would go to John for his signature. Once he signs it, it'll automatically go to the mayor of Rock Springs for them to sign after they approve it at tonight's meeting. So yeah, that's where we're at with the project. It's exciting. It's, I spent four hours yesterday working on phasing and project layout with the contractor, and it was pretty fantastic to see it all, like coming together and walking the site and knowing where we're putting fencing and concrete jersey barriers and all that kind of stuff to provide the traffic control. So thank you for your support. We would not be here if it wasn't for, if you guys remember about two years ago, you guys saying yes to a vision that I presented and helping plant some seed money for design, and we would not be here with these grant dollars if it wasn't for that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, commissioners, questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Smith?
Just a comment, it continues to amaze me that you're able to fund this through, you know, COVID and everything that's gone on, and you continually find grants and money, and it's just amazing to me. So kudos to you and, and your board, everybody that's been working through this for the two, three, four years that it's been a vision and then a, an idea, and then working through the actual process. And now you're just days away from breaking ground. It's awesome, so congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Other comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Shanefield?
I would love to echo what Commissioner Smith said. Great job, Devon. I'm a super excited to see, I mean, we've seen the airport grow and expand, and you're doing a great job for the community and your efforts do not go unnoticed.
Appreciate it. Other comments, commissioners?
Well, I'm enjoying being the liaison. That's my most fun activity, so thank you.
It probably just sends goosebumps. I mean, it does, doesn't it? I'm telling you what, it truly, truly does, it's exciting when you come in here, Devon, and talk about this and from where it started. So other comments, commissioners?
I'll just, Mr. Chairman, I'll echo, and then I also say, please wait a couple more years before you come for more big requests, so just teasing Devon. But no, great stuff, and, and I just think, I really think as we talk about diversifying our economy and quality of life, I think this is a key component. It's a, it's a gateway, it opens us up for, you know, transporting cargo, commerce, and all the things, and, and, and wanting people to come in and having a, a nice entryway, as you put it, a gateway into our community. So great job in, in acquiring all the grants.
Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? I guess I get to be last. I would just like to say, keep coming to us with these kinds of requests. I don't want you to wait a couple of years, as Commissioner Lloyd said, no, keep coming. I, I, I don't think you should feel bad coming before us. Your first comment was, I'm coming for you and asking you for something. You're, you're, you got the grant money. We love that. That's just, you know, it just can't be a better perfect fit. And as, and as much as you can get of that, we appreciate it. I remember two years ago, sitting in the old commission room, and there was a question when you asked for that money, what was the return on investment?
Well, right now, it's about 19. 19 to one right now.
Well, there you go. That's where I'm at, is we made a decision two years ago to support you, even though there was a question, you know, return on investment, saw it as a, as a crap shooter gamble, and no, we knew it wasn't. We knew what you were capable of doing, and 19 to one was the return on investment. And I think that's something that's very, very important that people need to know is your vision was real, we sensed it was real, it was solid, we sensed it was solid, and the end result is in 12 days, we'll see the beginning. So I'd like to just say, no, keep coming forward. That third grant that's coming in a couple of years, will that be brought to, before us to be signed again? So we'll see it.
Yep, and I'll be back in August with another $1.1 million grant or so. It's COVID relief funding at the third round for the airport. So three months in a row, we'll be coming in with federal father funds, so.
It's all good stuff, keep it up.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can, I there's been a, I hate looking at social media, but there's been chatter. And I just want to make it clear that myself, our airport board do not take asking for a penny from the cities or the county lightly. We we do our darndest to make sure that we drive our dependency on the cities and the county and our community as low as possible. And we continue to do that every single day and wise investments, strategic investments like this really help us get closer and closer to the day where we're not in your budget discussions anymore. And that's that's where we're trying to get and the futures there, the visions there, it's going to happen. And with your support, we're going to get there a lot quicker.
Well, and you would have been there a lot quicker had it not been for COVID and the way it hit. Because if I remember correctly, there was also a well-designed plan that you would become self-sufficient nearly by now. And COVID threw that in the you know, in the wreck. Yeah, well, as for many other people. So the county turns out and so did the city of Rock Springs. They stepped up and said, we know how times are, but this investment is well worth it and continued through the COVID. So I also want to thank Rock Springs City Council for their support and seeing this through and also seeing the vision two years ago to make the investment, that council and that mayor. So, you know, this is a team effort. And I think it's well worth it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the federal grant and authorizing the chairman to sign, Commissioner Toman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be proud to make that motion.
We got a motion by Commissioner Toman to approve the airport funding request grant. I'm going to read it just the way it is. The Federal Aviation Administrative Airport Improvement Program Grant Agreement and authorizing the chairman to sign. Motion by Commissioner Toman is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Thank you, Devin.
Thank you. You all have a great day.
You as well. Thank you. Next up is Tab J. It's a discussion of the fiscal year twenty twenty or twenty two C Mac grant process and here to present that is Mr. Legursky, our Public Works Director. Good morning, Mr. Legursky.
Morning.
How are you doing?
Great.
Not limping today.
No, that's a hard one to follow up because I'm going to ask for the opposite. So.
Yeah, but is yours going to come out of out of gas tax and that type of thing? See, that's it's not a hard one.
Oh, it's not a hard one. But this is just to give you an update to kind of follow through. So as you guys know, the C Mac process got changed last year. We went through the stuff and there was new contracts that went to the A G's office. We usually get our money and our grant and everything in January, February. That got delayed until June of this year, so we had to put out a dust control project solely. We scaled it down and we did it solely with gas tax. That will put our C Mac project bidding next year because they're basically the same projects. The thing about that is we are one of two counties that do that get the award and do the project the same year. I talked to my liaison down at the special programs down in Cheyenne. He said, that's not a big deal. He goes, you will get downgraded a little bit on your on your grant process this year. And I said, well, what happens if we don't do a grant this year? I said, we're already doing one. We have next year's project already covered with the C Mac. And he said, well, that would elevate you because you're not coming back every year asking for the same thing. So that's I just wanted to let you guys know that's what I'm planning on doing unless you guys have a different idea for that. I know it is one of those things that, you know, we count on that money. But with how we were able to do it this year, we just, there's no way we would have been magging in September, which isn't what we should be doing. So wanted to let you guys know unless you guys had any different opinion of not applying for the C Mac grant this year. I will, if you guys want me to, but it'll be a strange hybrid project. It'll probably be a second application of magnesium chloride on a couple of roads, you know, late next spring or late next fall. But I don't see the I don't see the need for it.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions regarding Miss Legursky's plan with regard to the C Mac as far as bypassing the grant this year? And then next year you'll apply?
Yep.
And then you'll use gas tax money to do it this year?
Sure.
Thank you.
And that's already bid and you guys awarded it last or a couple of weeks ago.
Very good. Any questions? Concerns? You okay with the way we're moving forward? I like the idea because it'll put us up higher for that grant and get us more money, right?
I don't know about more money, but it'll definitely put us up higher and the way they're looking at it is they're just cutting projects.
Okay.
So.
Alrighty, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, Miss Legursky. Appreciate the work you and your crew are doing. Thank you. Up next, Tab K, which is acceptance of the twenty twenty bulletproof vest partnership grant award. Here for that is Christina Marshall, our grants manager and our sheriff. Mr. Grossnickel, good morning. Good morning, Christina.
Good morning.
Welcome and thank you for being here this morning.
Welcome. I almost didn't make it. I hurt my back this weekend, so there everyone knows what that's like. So, okay, so Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Sweetwater County was awarded nine thousand ten dollars in bulletproof vest partnership grant funding from the U S Department of Justice. The project requires a fifty percent cash match and expires on August thirty first, twenty twenty two. I wish we could add a couple zeros after that, after hearing from Devin, but it's still, you know, we're not above any grant funding, right?
Yeah.
So the purpose of this grant funding is to protect the lives of law enforcement officers by providing officers with armored vests. This funding will be used to replace currently expired or soon to be expired ballistic vests for patrol and court security deputies. The sheriff estimates nine for patrol deputies and eight for court security deputies. I want to emphasize that in order to be eligible for this funding, the sheriff's office had to have a policy, a written policy in place. And I just want to emphasize the first sentence under their policy, which is in their pop, which is in your packet. It says, it is the policy of the Sweetwater County Sheriff's Office to maximize officer safety with the use of body armor in combination of prescribed safety procedures. So even though this is not the biggest and sexiest grant, it is a very important grant. The required cash match for this project was already included in the fiscal year twenty twenty two grant projects budget. So it will not require a budget amendment. And there is actually no contract to sign, so I'm asking you to accept this grant award. And with that, I'd like to ask the sheriff if he'd like to add anything to that.
Thank you. Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Ms. Marshall did a great job explaining that. Our goal is to serve our community. But on top of that, we want to make sure men and women go home safe to their families also. I think everybody knows the importance of the ballistic vests and it's another tool we have to keep them safe. So I appreciate your consideration in this.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Christina. Commissioners, any questions regarding this this grant award for either Ms. Marshall or the sheriff? Commissioner Smith?
I do have.
Just Commissioner Smith had to stand up first.
Christine is the match budgeted for?
Very good. Now, Commissioner Toman.
You said something about expiring vests. Do they have a lifer?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Toman, yes, approximately five years with the heat of the body, perspiration and just the wear and tear. Five years is what the life expectancy is. Technically, you can go further than that, but the manufacturers do not suggest that and we don't want to chance that either.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Commissioner Toman. Commissioner Shanefield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sheriff, thank you for being here. I just wanted to tell you thank you and to relate to your deputies. Thank you for the job that they're doing, especially, I mean, the local stuff that's going on with law enforcement right now is tough and it's scary and we appreciate all the hard work they do in keeping us safe.
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. It is difficult, but we are blessed to live in the community. We are. We have the support, majority of our community members and and again, when I've gone to those classes outside our state, we are blessed and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioners, what's your pleasure with regard to approving the acceptance of the twenty twenty bulletproof vest partnership grant award?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I would move to accept the twenty twenty bulletproof vest partnership grant award.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Award accepted. Thank you. Up next, I thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. Up next will be our approval to ratify Amendment One to the Community Juvenile Service Board Grant Contract. And here with us is our grant manager, Christina, as well as our department, our director for juvenile services, Ms. Kelly, Karen Kelly. So thank you. Floor is yours.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is some housekeeping to ratify Amendment One to the Community Juvenile Services Board Grant. Sweetwater County was previously awarded this grant in the amount of fifty five thousand seven hundred and forty five dollars from the Department of Family Services for the precourt diversion program. The term of the contract was originally set to expire on June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. We actually requested an amendment to extend the term to October thirty first, twenty twenty one to allow more time to fully expend the award. This amendment actually had to be signed outside of a regular commissioners meeting in order to return the amendment prior to the expiration of the contract. So for this reason, it needs to be ratified. And with that, I'm here to answer any more questions or Karen Kelly can.
Ms. Kelly, do you have anything to add?
I don't really have anything to add. We discussed the precourt diversion program several times.
Okay. Okay, very good. Thank you. Very well done. Commissioners, any questions for either our grants manager or Ms. Kelly? All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure with regarding to approve approval to ratify Amendment One to the Community Juvenile Service Board Grant Contract?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I will make that motion and authorize chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to ratify the Amendment One to the Community Juvenile Service and authorize chairman to sign. I believe I signed that already. It's just a ratification. Yeah, so it would be just a motion to ratify Amendment One to the Community Juvenile Service Board. Is that correct, Commissioner Shanefield?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Shanefield. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a good day. Okay, up next, ten fifteen. Oh, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Miss Kelly, hang on, because I think Mr. McLean's supposed to be here as well.
We can wait for him.
I think we should. I think we should take a ten minute break, Commissioners, maybe even fifteen. We'll come back at ten oh five. Little less than fifteen, but ten oh five, we'll come back. All right, thank you.
Okay.
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 Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Our next agenda item is Tab M., which is a request to restaff a vacant position in juvenile probation. And here to present that is our HR Director, Mr. McLean, as well as Juvenile Probation Director, Ms. Karen Kelly. Good morning, Gary, Karen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. We've had a few discussions regarding juvenile probation. We had a recent resignation of a probation agent. And and the request before you is a request to restaff that position. One of the essential discussions, I think, that we had last time and that we've had with Danny is that despite some of the funding that's gone away, juvenile issues in the state are some of the top priorities for the state and for the judicial system. There's lots of pressure to find ways to keep juveniles from being in the youth home, being in the detention center, and finding ways to minimize the recidivism as juveniles matriculate to adults and into the adult system. And and it's our belief that the juvenile probation department and programs play an integral role in that. And and so with that, before you as a request to restaff a vacant juvenile probation agent position, juvenile probation director Karen Kelly's here. If there's any questions the board has for me or Ms. Kelly, we'd be happy to take those at this time.
Thank you, Gary. Karen, anything to add?
I've provided some basic information in your packets. As Mr. McLean said, the push for juveniles is keeping them in the community, accessing community resources, and we really need an extra agent to be able to provide that.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions regarding this request?
Yeah.
Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, Mr. McLean, Ms. Kelly. I know that we recently put in for on a part-time person. Are we getting any applications for that position?
We've had a lot of applications for that position. I'm hoping that sometime this week, next week, I'll be able to sit down with Ms. McLean and start to help us with the...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? Ms. McLean, Ms. Kelly, Mr. McLean. A while back, we looked at a organizational that we went over and that. Does this fit into that? Doesn't take us outside of that? Very good. Thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? And what's your pleasure, Commissioners, regarding restaffing this vacant position in juvenile probation and authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the request to restaff a vacant juvenile probation agent position and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Commissioners, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, next up is language modification for resolution to enter into fire restrictions within Sweetwater County. And I asked Chief Bornasian to be here. So our fire warden, Mr. Bornasian's here, but this is mainly at a request from our last meeting, working with Mr. De León through the county attorney's office and to hopefully assist in the fact that our fire warden, working with our federal agencies, as we know right now, we're in stage one fire restrictions. Is that correct, Mike? And second of all, two possibilities could occur is we could go into stage two with the federal agencies. And hopefully, we, you know, with this resolution, Mike would be able to work with those agencies and make a decision that's best for the county and then bring it back to us our next meeting to, so that we can have a discussion and make sure we have done the right move, because the commission does have to authorize that. The other second thing that could happen with the stage one is the federal agencies could decide to remove the fire restrictions at any time, which could occur before or after a meeting and would not give our fire warden or the federal agencies to move out together. They may have to wait on us with this resolution. The language is of such that been changed to help make this a possibility, working with our federal agencies, that we would come out and our fire warden would have those conversations and work closely with those federal agencies and can make a decision to come out and then bring it, come out of fire, or remove fire restrictions, and then come back to us as a commission our next meeting to, for us to ratify that type move. So Commissioners, in your packet, there is a new resolution for dealing with fire restrictions. And looking at it, do you have any questions for? I'm going to primarily ask Mr. De León to be available or Mr. Bornasian to answer any questions regarding the the new resolutions. So Commissioners, any questions? You okay? Okay, Commissioners, with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2021-07-CC-04, which is an order establishing partial fire restrictions.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd?
I would still move.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the modification, the Resolution Number 2021-07-CC-04. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Commissioners. Chief, you have an opportunity to work with your federal agencies now and that type of thing. Thank you. Next up, under Tab O., is a request to restaff a vacant position in the Fire Department. And here to present that again is our HR Director, Mr. McLean, and our fire warden, Chief Mike Bornasian. So go ahead, Gary. Mike, if you want to come up to the podium, in case there's any questions, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. There's a request in your packet to restaff a vacancy in the County Fire Department. We had an engine boss who changed some career interests and resigned recently, leaving a vacancy in the department, obviously being in the middle of the fire season. It may prove kind of difficult to restaff that now. So Chief Bornasian had requested, instead of trying to refill a full-time position, see if we could fill that vacancy to staff the fire engine with a three-month seasonal. Obviously, there's considerable cost savings for that move. And so the request is to restaff the vacant engine boss position with a three-month seasonal position at a probably a firefighter-to-level. And the cost summary is provided in your packets. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to address it.
Thank you. Chief, anything to add? Nothing to add? Okay, very good. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Shanefield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not a question. I just wanted to tell Mr. Bornasian thank you for being aware of the budget, and we appreciate that.
Okay, other comment or questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, just a question for Chief Bornasian. So this would essentially be taking one of your four full-timers and going to three full-timers, correct? Is the way I'm interpreting this?
Yes, sir. What, to be, to be absolutely upfront, what I'd like to do is try to get us through this fire season at full staff with just a seasonal. I'll have to move one of our other engine bosses to work double to cover, so we have leadership on the apparatus. And then this winter, work with HR, work with the board about how do we move forward? And are we able to, at that time, perhaps this winter, look at replacing that person with a full-time position?
That makes sense. And I appreciate kind of echoing Commissioner Shanefield's thoughts on, you know, just being conscious of that, and that makes sense. And the reason I wanted to ask Mike was that, is I know when we talked about your temporary, we talked about the need for that specific number. So I just want to make sure this makes you feel comfortable in getting through the fire season.
It does. My, my biggest challenge right now is trying to find a qualified person. That will be our, our challenge. We've already started and we're not there yet. So, but I, based on your decision, we may put a little more robust effort out. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Other questions for Mr. McLean or the fire warden? Commissioners, with no other questioning, what's your pleasure in regarding to approve of a oh darn it, I lost my spot, restaffing a vacant position in the Fire Department? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'd move that we approve, Mr. Chairman.
You have a motion to...
Authorize the chairman to sign.
You have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the vacant position in the Fire Department. Authorize chairman to sign. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. McLean, thank you. And good luck, Fire Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, was Tab P., which we took off the agenda. So now we moved to Tab Q., which is a request to approval of a proposed employee policy change. And here to present that is Mr. McLean, our HR Director. Go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners. This is kind of a follow-up to last meeting and actually part of a broader discussion in terms of reviewing some county personnel policies over the next several meetings. As this particular policy was something that was discussed as a result of the federal approval of the Juneteenth Day and caused some conflict potentially with our existing policy. I've included in here a proposed policy change, and just for simplicity, I included the current policy, which is on the left, and the proposed policy on the right. As discussed at the last meeting, the notable change is really changing the language from any other holidays as proclaimed by the board or other state or federal officials to including any other holidays as proclaimed by the board and removing other state or federal officials to clarify that issue. So that's the recommended change. And and then I think from, from this point forward, I've talked with Commissioner... And, and then I think from, from this point forward, I've talked with Commissioner Lloyd. I, I think we have a process to review the county policies. As I've mentioned before, we have a number of amendments, some to update, some that need to be changed. And so I think the process is going to be to circulate those proposed changes to department heads, get some feedback if there's any, and then bring forth the recommendation to the board, just, you know, chapter to time or two chapters of time until we've got them all completed. And we'll have some subsequent discussions. But I know this was a timely one, so we brought this one up today. And so if there's any questions, we'd be happy to address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Other questions for Mr. McLean, commissioners? Since this is a policy change, does it have to have first, second, third readings, approval, or is it, I'd ask Mr. Deleon?
It doesn't need a first, second, third.
Doesn't need any, so we can approve it as it is?
You can approve it as it is, yes.
All right. So thank you very much. That was one of the things I wanted to talk to you about yesterday and I forgot to. Thank you. Commissioners, with regard to this budget, or not budget, approval of this policy, employee employment policy changes, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
I move that we approve the proposed employment policy changes as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the proposed policy or employment policy changes as presented. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Toman?
I will second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Okay, I believe up next was budget update, but I don't see Bonnie there. We already had a schedule that's not due till 11th. But I think we could move ahead and let's move into the Star Transit Board appointment under tab S, commissioners. And let's see what we have there. Pardon?
Looks fairly straightforward.
Yes, it is. I agree. When I look at it, here we go. We have a vacancy, a three-year term, and the vacancy was due to expiring term of Mr. Zenetti. Mr. Zenetti is eligible for reappointment, and we have no new applicants. So I believe our liaison for Star, which is now Commissioner Shaneville, have you attempted to, have you had an opportunity to attend our meetings yet?
Mr. Chairman, no. I was out of town for the last one. However, Commissioner Lloyd did attend, knowing that I wasn't going to be there and to bid them farewell as well, so.
All right, Commissioner Lloyd, since you were the past and had a lot of opportunity, we have one applicant. What's your pleasure?
Um, in talking to Mary Seppi and the board, my recommendation would be to re, to appoint Joe Zenetti.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Zenetti to the vacancy at the Star Transit. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaneville. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. Next one's rather straightforward to commissioners. It's the 2021, 2022 county commissioners' renewal scholarships or scholarship. Going to that, pull it up one more time. I believe we have a renewal scholarship for the University of Wyoming, and it's a matter of renewal. And looking at it, Nick Nelson has applied for the renewal of the scholarship. And I do believe he is the only applicant. Is that correct? Very good. So commissioners, any questions regarding the renewal scholarship? If not, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Anybody who gets an A in Calculus II, I move that we approve a renewal of the scholarship for Mr. Nelson.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the renewal of the application by Nick Nelson for the scholarship. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shaneville. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, same sign, motion carries. Okay, next up is at 11:25, an hour from now.
Wow.
We got Bonnie in.
Where are you at?
Bonnie's in the house.
Bonnie's here.
Bonnie, good morning. Well, let's back up. I see Dave Divas is aboard on, there we go, and Gary. So up next, let's go back to tab R, which is budget update. Just, and that'll be presented by Ms. Bonnie Berry. And as you know, just let me share with anyone that may be listening is the commission decided they wanted to start looking at where budgets might be projected and wanted to start looking at when quarterly numbers come in that are fairly predictable, but again, are not guaranteed. So we've had those, had that opportunity for those numbers to come in and I, and Mr. Divas and Mr. McLean have worked with Ms. Berry to hopefully help us as we move forward, as we do this in a quarterly basis, so we have a better idea of, and start, can start planning as we work with our budget. So Ms. Bonnie Berry, I'll turn the floor over to you. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So I put together a spreadsheet kind of showing projected revenues. Obviously, these numbers can change because we're estimating pretty far out. But if you remember, a few months ago, when Rob and I met with you, you decided that your minimum reserve balance for that goal, you wanted it to be 25 million and you didn't want to take it all out in fiscal year 2022. You wanted that to be over a three-year period. So hopefully you've had a chance to look at this spreadsheet, but that puts us out to 2024. And from these projected numbers, we're projected to be at 25,782,200 at that point in time, which is fabulous news. That's withholding steady and making the changes that I know that are coming. So I don't know if you've had a chance to look at this, but I just did put in there, I, I put notes in there on, on why I changed, what I changed as far as revenues and expenditures go over the next couple of years. We are anticipating some pilt money in the next two, in fiscal year 23 and 24. We don't know how much that is. So I did plug in 1.5 million for that. We have no idea how much it's going to be. So it could be off. It could be higher, it could be lower. We don't know. But the message I wanted to give you today is that we are looking good at, if we hold people steady, if we hold the outside agencies, departments, component units, if, if we, if we stay pretty flat, we'll be okay for the next couple of years. We'll be just fine. Once you get to fiscal year 2025, that pilt money, that additional pilt money is going to go away. So that's when we're going to see a decrease. So if we stay flat to that point, then we're going to see a decrease in, a projected decrease in reserves down to 23,697,000. So I guess going forward, we may want to, you may want to make some decisions about priorities, where restructuring could be needed to save some money and so that we can give those either departments, outside agencies, component units, time to get to that, that level. So that is what I have. Hopefully you've had a chance to review this. Are there any questions?
Before we go to questions for you, let's, Mr. Divas is in the audience. So Mr. Divas, will you come up and, and just kind of share where, where you pulled your, where, not where you pulled your numbers, but what numbers you looked at and what is you saw? Why it is we still need to be very, very careful as we move forward because we just don't know where things are truly going to be at over the next several months. Go ahead.
Well, and we recently, I recently attended an assessors meeting in Lander, and one of the presenters was Craig Grandrick from the Mineral Tax Division. We talked about the mineral estimates that we had received. And one of the things that was in that estimate was for the month of February of 2021, the revenue that was received from natural gas was almost $65 million. Okay, the month before was 29 million, the month after was 29 million. That February anomaly was the, the crisis in Texas. So that's when natural gas prices went through the roof. I still think that number is valid, but I think that number's going to have to be smoothed out over the rest of that year. Okay? So when Bonnie and I had talked, it didn't click that that's actually what had happened, but some of the other assessors had picked up on that and we talked about it up in, in Lander. So my, my mineral estimates, which are half of our valuation, cautiously optimistic. That's the rule of the day. I mean, I think Bonnie's exactly right. Things I don't think are going to get worse. We just don't know if they're going to get much better. So we're trying to stay, you know, in that $100 million range as far as an increase from this year to next year. I think that's reasonable. But keep in mind, these revenue number, these valuation numbers for these minerals, because of Senate File 60, are all part of the pot that's put off to the side. It's going to be lumped together and repaid by the industry over that 12 and a half year period. So this is not revenue that we're receiving right away. This is revenue that's put off and paid back. So please keep that in mind, that this is going to be lumped with the second half of the 2020 production and then all of this 2021 production as well will be lumped together and then paid back over time by those companies. So just keep that in mind. Okay? And then the other thing that was talked about for Mr. Grandrick, and Bonnie was already aware of this, she had already planned this in, was that the initial payment period was going to be, the companies weren't going to pay their severance tax in January, and then, or they were going to sever the mineral in January. It was going to be due to the Department of Revenue in March. The company, the Department of Revenue is going to create an invoice for those companies. Evidently, they have an issue with the amount being paid by the companies as not being the exact amount that was originally due. So what they've decided to do is electronically invoice those companies and have those companies pay that amount to them electronically. Now, he didn't get into the fact that if the state is going to pay the county electronically, we never got that far in the process. And all of this is just plans at this point. None of this is set in stone and none of this has been approved. This is kind of just the way they're thinking this is going to work. What that's going to do is it's going to, that, that payment that we should have received maybe in April, probably won't be received until May. So I think we're just going to have one less payment than maybe we thought we were going to have next year. So our next fiscal year. But Bonnie had already worked that into her calculations. So, so there's no real new information. The details are starting to clarify just a little bit. But we, we won't know until we get started next year. But, but the mineral numbers, you know, are relatively positive. Oil was up about 8%. The natural gas is, is up 25%. But again, that's with the anomaly for February. Surface coal is right where it was last year. Underground coal is just a little bit above, and so is Trona. So things are stabilizing and, and at least headed the right direction.
Questions for Mr. Deus? Mr. McLean, do you have anything to add? Part of this is personnel. 85%.
Yeah, not quite that high, Mr. Chairman, but it, it's significant, obviously. I think one of the important parts is, is that most of the components of the personnel costs, whether it be salary, retirement, health insurance, are fairly well-known and, and fairly predictable. So I think that's a big portion of the budget that as we move ahead with various models and we'll be modeling those, we should have pretty high accuracy in terms of personnel costs, notwithstanding increasing numbers or something like that. But at the current levels, I think we'll be able to project out into the future with high accuracy personnel costs. So that part, I think we know. If, if Dave could figure out how to get the revenue on that level of predictability, I think we'd have this whip. But so I think the, the main thing is the personnel costs are fairly predictable and we should be able to model those out several years with high accuracy.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for either Ms. Berry, Mr. McLean, or Ms. Steve, Mr. Divas?
Mr. Chairman?
My question is regarding the cash carry, projected cash carryover, 5 million in fiscal year '22, but then just 1.5 after that. Discrepancy there, but so, do you have a better crystal ball, a little clearer for '22 and not so much in the future?
I'm hoping they will be higher than that. That was a number that Rob had estimated out when he actually prepared this initially. And if you remember, originally, we were anticipating that that number for fiscal year '22 would be much lower, perhaps negative. So, so yeah, this, I, I could increase that a little bit and that would, would help the situation even better.
Not asking for that, just asking for an explanation. So I'm happy, I'm happy.
So the explanation was, is that number came from a couple of months ago, and we obviously have no idea what the cash carryover is going to be. Historically, it has been around $5 million the last few years. So that is what you would think. But now, a, a lot of the cash carryover is made up of capital projects not being done. And we have decided this year to change how we're doing that, budget everything under capital. And rather than just having that go into cash carryover, move it into a different department, like move further down the list to do those capital projects. So theoretically, if that all works out, we won't have any capital cash carryover because we'll just move down the list and do more. Also, operating, there was a lot of over-budgeting and operating every year, and we've tried to eliminate that this year by setting the budgets at the highest amount they've been in the last four years for every single department and elected official. So hopefully that'll bring that down. And then it's just a matter of payroll. It's a matter of, and, and those are budgeted for the current positions we have with the current level of benefits that they have. And then also the, the health insurance. I mean, so, so theoretically, that number should go down with the cuts that we made this year. I'm hopeful that it won't. I'm hopeful that because of the decreased budgets, that the, the employees of the county will, will be a little bit more conservative and, and look a little bit more closely at what they're spending. And because their budgets are lower, maybe think a little bit more about what they're purchasing. So, but I, I would, I would like to see that number higher than the 1.5 million, but that's where it stems from. So.
Great explanation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Bonnie, number one, I'm really concerned about that cash carryover number 4998401. I don't see us carrying over nearly that much. And the reason is, is during the last budget, when we went through and took over the overages that you were predicting, we cut a lot of these, our departments and such to bare bones. And, and I think what's going to happen is we're going to see a significant number, and I mean significant number of budget amendments throughout the year that's going to shrink that number. An example I give is I was talking to a department director whose travel budget was shrunk, shrunk to $60. And he's already got a conference he has to go to. So we're going to be seeing a budget amendment from that department within the next three to four weeks. So I, I have a feeling we have cut those, our departments to a point where we can't cut much more. And I think because of that, there will be a way bigger decrease in cash carryover, in my opinion. And in talking to multiple department directors and elected officials, that seems to be the consensus that they do see themselves having to go into multiple budget amendments throughout the year. And so, and I know that's what kind of they were instructed upon. Hey, if you're, if you're over, so that concerns me. And I guess my question, and so with that being said, when you look at reserves necessary to fund the budget, at 5,455, if that projected cash carryover is even half, I guess my thing is, is I, I predicted we basically kicked the can down the road with the budget. And I think we're going to really be in a struggle next year personally. And then I guess one of my questions on the current reserves, you're currently listed at 34032. Does that include the response money? Or is that separate, is that outside of the response? Is that, is that-
American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, the rescue plan. Okay, so we have 34 in the reserves without the rescue plan right now? Okay, I thought we were-
That was what you guys wanted. Why I just wanted 25 million and not include that money. So that's how I presented it.
Okay, I thought we were going to be lower than that. So when we made the cuts. And then I guess my other question is, go ahead.
That's how much we, we, that's how much we were at. So our projected cash reserve balance on 6/30/2022 is the 28 million.
Okay, that makes sense.
We use that. We're using some of that money.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then my other concern too is I have a hard time including the additional pilt monies because they're guesses. And I would prefer that we don't even have those into the figures until we receive them and know what they are because they're, they're not, you know, they're not guaranteed. And we do think through the response plan, the recovery plan, we're going to see some of that, but it's, but we don't know. And so it's hard for me to predict a budget money that we don't know from a concept. And then I think one thing too that we have to look at, I think as we, I think we have to look at something that was kind of mentioned is our employees haven't seen a raise or, or a bonus in a point of time. And there comes a point where we have to. I know we did have a constituent comment a couple of weeks ago about not liking the concept of providing our employees raises and a possible extra holiday day. But with that being said, I mean, I think to be competitive and to bring in good people, we have to be able to maintain our ability to provide- But with that being said, I mean, I think to be in competitive and to bring in good people, we have to be able to maintain our ability to provide. Raises and bonuses to our employees. And, and I think that's something we have to look at as a long-term thing. How do we get that in, in motion to get there during tough times? And I guess the last thing I have with the budget projections is, I still think it's essential as a commission that we have conversations and. Really get into the concept of what is the important things to budget, you know, the outside agencies, the inside agencies, how do we get to a consensus? And that consensus could change every two years where there's a new election. But I think we have to have those concepts as we set the budget to know what's important and what the priorities are. And I think we've missed that the last couple of years. And so because of that, I think it makes us kind of budgeting. Without knowing where we're going into the future. And I think we need to continue with strategic planning to kind of know where we're going into the future. But I, I worry if these numbers are, are, if they're overinflated and because I know Rob's numbers originally were a little less. But man, we, we, we could, we could be back to the point where, where last year's budget was stressful. And I think we could have future budgets that are even just as stressful, if not more, if we don't answer those questions. So. That's kind of where I wanted to just put out where my concerns with some of this was.
Thank you. Other questions, commissioners? Comments, Commissioner Smith?
Can I just comment on Commissioner Lloyd's comments there that. You know, I've, in many of those, those things, I, I can completely understand the desire to be conservative and. Make sure we're planning for the future. I'll continue to maintain though my stance that this is the taxpayer's money and should be spent on the taxpayer. And shouldn't be, you know, held on to by the county for some theoretical rainy day or something down the road. It's, it's raining now and we should be spending the money. We need to be responsible and hang on to a portion of that. I think that's the portion we've agreed upon, but things like the pilts, we know there's going to be some money there. They said there's going to be something and I think that's a reasonable assumption that we're using. And so just, just my, my continued thoughts that hanging on to too much money is not fair to the taxpayer when they're in need. They've paid the taxes, they expect services and we should be providing those services and, and not hanging on to more money than we need to.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Other comments, commissioners?
Mr.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Yeah. And I, I, I see where you're coming from, Commissioner Smith, but I also know if we continue to borrow from our reserves at the level we have the last couple of years. In two to three years, we won't have reserves to borrow from. And that's where I'm concerned too. I mean, we have to find a balance.
And I agree with that. And that's why we've laid out the 25 million and I, I, I think that's a great goal. I would have gone even a little less, but that's an excellent goal. And this plan gets us there with the assumptions that we have. So, yeah, I think we're, I think we're moving the right direction.
Thank you. Other comments, commissioners? No questions? Any further questions for Ms. Berry, Mr. Devis, or Mr. McLean? I think then again, too, I would ask that the Mr. Devis and Ms. Berry and Mr. McLean work, you know, when the next quarter numbers come in. I would look at the rest of commissioners and, and do another report update like this similar, so we can look at where we're at with, and that type of thing. My comment to the fellow commissioners, our next steps, what'd you like to see done? Commissioners, what do we need to do for work between now and when we're presented the next numbers? Commissioners, Toman.
Well, I, I do think we need to start, as Commissioner Lloyd has said, we, we need to start now thinking about what our priorities are, what, what's really important to this county. And how we're going to fund it because it's really hard to do it all in, in the last few months of the year.
So you're, you're suggesting we begin workshops amongst commissioners to look at prior, priorities and other, other things as well, right?
Yes.
Okay. Other comments, commissioners on next steps?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I also think it's important that we maybe start bringing in some of the outside entities and not just their directors, but their boards and having conversations about what their visions are. And, and educating us a little bit and even some of the departments and. The department directors. And then that gives us better information of where we need to go and to set up those priorities. And then also gives us time if we have to look at any changes to folks' budgets to give them six months or so to make changes. So I think this is the time to start having a couple budget workshops every once in a while to have conversations with organizations. You know, my example, I would use with the library, the library board, hey, where's your vision? Where are you going? And we can tie some of this into strategic planning long-term and then kind of, it kind of lets us guide where we need to go, I think, through those discussions. And those same discussions can happen with the assessor's office and the sheriff's office and, and, and really start to have that future planning involved in couple that with the budget planning.
Thank you. Other thoughts, commissioners? Alrighty, so maybe we can have a conversation about, you know, we're talking workshops and in that. Looking at different entities, whether it's outside agencies, where there's component units and visiting with those, is that correct, commissioners? Looking at budgets. So alrighty. My next question is how are we going to, how do, would you like to do that? I know workshop, but how'd you like to see that organized?
Can I marinate?
Pardon?
I said, Mr. Chairman, I may have to marinate.
You have to marinate on, you know? Okay. So really we've just got some ideas, but we don't have a solution how to move forward with it, right?
Chairman, I think that. It's difficult, even, even last year in talking with people in February, when we first got our assignments. Many of them weren't quite sure, you know, what, what the future held and how about our budget and what about this and how short are we going to be? And so I think that Commissioner Lloyd's idea of the long-term, those are discussions we can have now. I think that it would be difficult for every, probably most every entity that we talk with to, to tell us what they're going to need next year. You know, we're just so far out and things are so different right now. Maybe in other years, I think it would, could work out, but this year I think it'd be really rough. But, but having, getting them and their boards to make plans for two, three, four years. And I think that the airport is, is a great example with Devon's leadership and that board of, hey, this is what we're trying to accomplish. And, and this is where it's laid out for years to come. They, they know where they're going and they know what they want to do, even though the funding may not be there. And they had this renovation project planned and COVID happened and, and all kinds of things, but you know, it was pushed off, but now it's, it's happening. And so I'm having that vision of what's going on in the future, despite what happens, you know, have to, every, every one of us can have to adjust. But that, that long-term planning, I think is really important and a great idea to do.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Toman.
Well, maybe we should start with the core, core departments and entities because I know we went out one-on-one, but I think maybe it would be better. To have all of us hear what they had to say because I learned a lot by the one-on-one appointments, but then we never had the opportunity to share that information with the rest of you.
Good point.
So maybe our budget workshops should just start with the uniqueness about each of their entities and, and their visions and things they want to do. I mean that, and where they get other money. I think that is very helpful to know a lot of that, even though they might not be into budget mode.
Well, and, and some of the conversations, when you say you have, you learn a lot in different places, you know, being. In that, in this for six, for a little over six years and talking with different departments. There, there are departments that do bring revenue to the county and that type of thing. And, and, and in some cases, it's very significant when you think about what the detention center brings in. And then when our fire warden presents to us what the past year was like and, and happens to. Do the federal fires and that type of thing and get the reimbursements, the amount of money that comes in now. I won't say the county makes money because I don't think we make money on those things. But that is revenue that's brought in to offset their costs. And there's revenue brought in regarding the use of those equipment, for example, in fire and that type of thing. When you take a look at the life of that equipment, it's about 12 years. If it's really taken care of, you can get a little longer, but if it's used a lot. It's about 12 years. And then we've got to begin to start thinking about how do we replace that equipment because it's not cheap, fire replacement equipment. So there's some things there. So I agree with you, Commissioner Toman. Individually, we do learn, but the rest of us don't hear the whole story. So, Mr. Devis, what, what are your next numbers? Come in. Okay, here's what, here's what I'd like to see us do. I, I, we're throwing a lot of ideas on the table, you know, and that type of thing. Commissioner Shanefield, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, something I'd like to add.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we've had a lot of conversation around. The outside entities and what services they're providing versus what's being paid for. And I would like to have conversations with them as well. Open, honest conversations so that we know what services are being provided, what, and what we're paying for. And we have assurance that those things are happening. Because if we do end up having to cut further and, you know, it's going to affect our citizens. And we need to know where we can cut to make the least amount of damage to our citizens and our community. But that really stems from knowing exactly what services we're paying for and what's being provided and the impact that those have on the community. So I, I don't even, I think Commissioner Toman had a great idea in bringing them in. And I wouldn't even just stop with, you know, our county departments. I think we need to talk to everybody.
Well, I agree. I was just saying, start with your core.
And, and I might add on to that, agree bringing everybody in, but I, I, I hear what Ms. Berry has to say. You know, there's probably some room in operations through the county budget. But you know, we've always started with the county and we've always bare-boned the county, which we think we have. And, you know, and unfortunately, when we find out with carryover significant, that didn't occur. But the one area we have not spent a lot of time with has been either the outside agencies or the component units. Individually to talk about what it is, what they do and to. As those service contracts grow out, go out, have an understanding of what it is they do and where the duplication services are. And as much as we haven't so much gone percentage with our. Core government, which is our departments and electeds. With the outside agencies and component units, we've always kind of wanted to be more strategic and understanding what they're doing. And that type of thing and look at their carryovers and, and that type and other things within their budget. So I agree, we need to bring them all in and talk with them, see what they're doing and talk about what it is they're offering. But I, my preference is to start with the outside agencies and component units and spend time there. Fair time there that we have with our core government. Cause I think that's where. We're not, that's where we got to know what they're doing and there's, what is their carryover? And honestly, I've said it before. If it's a sole outside agency that we fund and they have a massive carryover and it's not needed for the first three or four months to do business. You know, what is it they actually need to survive, to get through the year? And, and get that to where it is and, and that type of thing. So I agree. Bringing those in and, and I don't know when you want to start doing that, commissioners, but we do know we get September numbers and could get a report then. And that might be a time, I don't know if that's too late to start or if you want to start earlier. So what's your thoughts, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I kind of really, I really like this. And I think this is the direction we started talking about going down a couple of months ago. And, and I think one of the advantages is starting a little bit sooner. And I do see where Mr. Commissioner Smith is coming from. That some of these organizations may not be ready to talk budget, but I don't know if we necessarily have to talk specific budgets at this point. As much more as like what you're saying, Chairman Wendling, functions, what are we doing? How are we spending the money? You know, where's it going? And getting those philosophical concepts and figuring it out from there. And I think one of the advantages is starting sooner is. To be able to do two or three, maybe four, a workshop, because I'll tell you, when you go through fifteen or 20 in a day. By, by the time you get to the last five, your brain is mush. I mean, we've already met from eight-thirty till two in the afternoon. And during almost every budget hearing, we went till seven o'clock at night almost. And to say that I was effectively thinking at six-thirty after hearing the fifteenth agency after a five-hour meeting. I'd be lying to the constituents saying I was probably at full capacity at that point. So I think if we could come up with a schedule and be able to do three or four, to really get those intimate and. Those specific details and to be able to ask those questions and really be effective as leaders with being fresh, I think is important.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other thoughts, commissioners?
Well, we have forty-five of them, maybe Ms. Berry could help us start scheduling.
Well, and you know, when you say forty-five, it's a rough number. That means nine workshops if you put five in each. Cause I, I agree with Ms. Commissioner Lloyd that I don't know how much. What I'm looking for the word, it's not respect, but it's. What message am I sending to a group when I only give them five or 10 minutes to tell me what they're about? And I'm looking at their financial records and that type of thing. How, how, how fair is that in five or 10 minutes? And what's the message as a commissioner I'm sending as far as the importance of the services they provide and the understanding of the services they provide? So I would agree very much that we need to start sooner than later. I guess my question becomes is, is September a time to start or is August a time to start? Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I think we should start earlier. I think we should do it in August.
Start in August. Okay. Cause we're, we're at the first meeting and second meeting in July. So let's just start August first, our first meeting in August.
That's not the county fair and everything. I would say do it our second meeting.
Second meeting, I agree. And I was just going to ask, Mr. Lloyd, when is, are you scheduling a. Strategic planning?
We were looking at the second meeting in August is what we originally discussed, but I also think. Some of this is going to go hand in hand. And, and I think what we're doing is really breaking down and, and talking to outside entities and talking to our inside entities. And really that is a lot of strategic planning. And so I really think, as I was thinking going forward in strategic planning and a little bit of conversation I've had with Commissioner Shanefield. Was this is where we, Lauren, correct me if I'm wrong, we really wanted to start breaking down all the entities and, and break, looking at a bigger picture. So I think in a way, Doc, we're doing the same process that I think we were kind of looking at. Would you agree, Lauren, that by going this direction?
I agree.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, we could still do a workshop, but have two agenda items. First one, strategic planning or second one, strategic planning. And the other agenda item would be a review of outside agencies, component agencies. And their services. And understanding of how their finances are set. For some of these, there'll be contract reviews if we need to, which I think is important.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shanefield.
I would suggest potentially doing one, like at the first meeting and then doing a different one at the second meeting and go rotating back and forth. Again, I want, I want us, when we're having these conversations and we're processing the strategic planning part of it on top of learning about these entities. I want us to be. Able to focus on that and not be flip-flopping back and forth and I, you know, have the time to have conversations between hand and everything. I sometimes feel like we shove too much stuff in for workshops and things like that at the end of the day and we are not effective when that.
And we're not, we're not going to have days of business like today where it's 11 o'clock and, and we're way ahead of schedule. So.
That's not been the norm for us.
That's not been the norm. So after a long day, it's best probably to have a shorter workshop, give you a focus. So commissioners, let's, who, are you object to doing, for example. Review of outside agencies at one meeting and strategic planning at another meeting each month, alternating? Seeing everybody's okay with that? All right. So what we'll do, starting second one in August, I think that one should be strategic planning to leave it off for workshop. And then starting in our first meeting in September, we'll begin bringing in. Let's start with. Component units and then followed with outside agencies after we work through the component units. Our component units and our joint communications. From that standpoint, it would be. Or not just joint communications, I meant our. Thank you, Joint Powers Board. And we've got three for joint communications that represent the county. So I think they need to be here along with Mr. Seppi. You know, although there's no question on their budget, but we need to, that'd be a good information basis for us, for them to share with us and how things work. Cause they have a really clean operation. When you get to, that was Water Board, Joint Communications, it would be their, our three board members. And any of their others as well as. and any of their others, as well as their director, which is Mr. Former Sheriff. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. We know the airports, Joint Communications as well, or not Joint Communications, Joint Powers. And then the other component units become the fair, events complex, Southwest Counseling, right? Who else?
Hospital.
Hospital.
Board of Health.
Board of Health, yeah.
Museum.
And you know, the hospitals, you know, and I don't know, do we need all of them to come in, commissioners? Yep, okay. I'm just asking, because Hospital just came in and did their report, for example. Go ahead, Bonnie.
Sorry, I'm, no, I'm, I'm just gonna sit down.
All right, go ahead and sit down. You can talk from there, thank you. Sorry about that, I forgot what you're experiencing. And then after that, component units and the outside agencies in whatever order you wish, Bonnie.
Did you want to do all the component units and the Joint Powers Boards at this, at the one in September?
No, we only want, we only want three or?
I think that would be two sessions.
Yeah, I do too. I think you only want, I think you want Joint Communications, one session, I mean, Joint Powers Board, one session. Component units, next session, and then outside agencies. Okay? I'll work with you. All right. Anything else on this topic for Ms. Berry or Mr. Devis or Mr. McLean? And I would suggest, yeah, just kind of work together and see what we come up with, okay? And then Dave will look for future numbers as well. All right, anything else, commissioners? Thank you. With that, we're ahead of schedule because at eleven-twenty-five, we're to consider and act upon statutory requirements of filling the county treasurer's vacancy. But being ahead of schedule is fine because we're going to, do you have something, Sally? Okay. Because we do need to sit with our attorney, go into executive session, sit with our deputy attorney, just so we have a good understanding of the statutes, process for this selection, and that type of thing. And so that'll take a little bit of time, and hopefully we'll be back out here by eleven-twenty-five to carry on with business. So we as commissioners and our deputy attorney, as well as whoever the recorder is, Ms. Lane, will go into the Castle Rock Room, so the audience can stay here if they wish. Thank you. I'll take a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Counting motion by Commissioner Shanefield, a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're in executive session, Castle Rock Room.
Okay, I'd like to call this commission out of executive session. And our next agenda item is to consider and act upon the statutory requirement of filling the county treasurer's vacancy. As we know all, our former treasurer, Rob Slaughter resigned, I believe July 2nd was his last day, or was his first day of retirement. And that started the process for us to find his replacement. And by statute, the commission is responsible to, is responsible to decide if they're going to choose a candidate that has been submitted to the commission by the Democratic Party in this case. And the Democratic Party went through a process to determine who their three candidates would be. I do know that with us this morning are all three candidates, and I think if I would, I'll read your names, and if you please stand. Mike Masterson, Joe Barbuto, and Megan Jensen. Thank you and welcome. With that, the first thing I'd like to do is before we move into the processes, I would ask that we, the board, the commissioners be updated or shared with what the procedure was that the Democratic Party went through in selection of their three candidates that were forwarded to us as commissioners. And I believe our Democratic Chair, Megan Jensen, is here. She led the process. She probably was the only person who formulated and led the charge with the process. So Ms. Jensen, if you would be so kind, please come up to the podium and share with the commissioners what process the Democratic Party filed to present the three names that we have before us today. Good morning, and introduce yourself.
Well, thank you Chairman. Thank you Commissioners. My name is Megan Jensen. I'm the current Chair of the Sweetwater County Democratic Party. And I believe the question before me is the process that got us to this point today. Is that correct? Okay, so the Executive Committee, we held a meeting where only two members came. I followed up with an email on how the process would be decided. Everybody agreed upon that. And the process basically was, we had tried to hit the media as much as possible, asked people who may or may not be interested in it, whether or not they're willing is a different story. That we had talked to plenty of people to at least take this on. So it was more of a word of mouth type thing. We relied on media heavily. And that's pretty much the process. Like I said, it was a couple of weeks of really hard hitting, just trying to talk to people to get up and put their name in.
Yeah, could you share with us how we got the three names, yours, Joe's, and Mr. Masterson?
Very last step, after talking extensively to the community. The meeting started, and the process began with the two people who had put in applications at that point was Dave Gray and Joe Barbuto. Obviously, we're supposed to bring three, and we opened up the floor to put in nominations. The very first nomination was my name. And I did accept the nomination. There was a second nomination on the floor after mine, and that was Mike Masterson. Mike Masterson then also accepted the nomination. And then we went through the process of answering questions. Well, first with three minutes to introduce ourselves. And the person who had taken off after me was our State Committee Man, RJ Piper, and he took over the meeting for us because I became a candidate. And he put the names in the hat to answer questions. We answered three to four questions from the precinct committee people. And then we held a vote on a ballot where they're signed and still somewhere for at least 30 days.
And the ballots, when drawn, turned out to be the three names that were given to us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Three names. And of those four ballots, if I understand, were Mr. Masterson, yourself, Mr. Barbuto, and Mr. Gray?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Questions regarding the process, Commissioners, for Ms. Jensen?
Mr. Shanefield. Thank you. Megan, how come we only received one resume and letter from the committee, and we did not receive anything on you and Mr. Masterson? I recognize that you were nominated from the floor, but...
That would probably be a problem on my part. I did not direct anybody to do that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, Commissioners? Okay, with no further questions, thank you, Ms. Oh, Commissioner Shanefield.
Sorry. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So in your committee, how did you determine, and was there any discussion around qualifications of candidate? Or was it simply tried to get enough people to fill the three spots?
Basically, you would be somebody who showed somewhat of integrity or leadership in the community. To the best of my knowledge, qualifications is basically that when you're taking on a public servant job like this. So there were no qualifications really set forth for anybody.
Wait one second. I want to make sure I got all of them answered.
Yeah, that's okay.
I think I'm good for now.
Other Commissioners? Okay, thank you, Megan. If you'd like to sit down. Thank you for that information. As we move forward by state statute, just to remind everybody, the qualifications for this and most elected officials is one that they're of voting age, which is age 18, they're resident of Sweetwater County. And there's a third one, non-felon. Is that correct? All right. So those are basically when you talk about what qualifies Chairman Wenling to do the treasurer's job. That's all I have to have. Those three things, or even to be a commissioner. So keep that in mind as qualifications and that type of thing. So with that, our next steps will be, as in this box, I have three names of the candidates. And I'll ask our, we'll draw the names out in order. And the first name will be the person the commission will interview. While that interviewing is going on, we'll ask the other two candidates to please go across the hallway and wait into the Castle Rock Room. And when we're finished with that first candidate, then we'll go get the second candidate, and then the third. After the candidates are finished being interviewed, they may stay here in the chambers and listen to whatever else is taking place. And the Commissioners will have that up to following that. Then the commission will formally, and hopefully, decide on a treasurer for appointment as to when to start. And we'll go from there. How's that sound? Okay, with that, I will ask that our Administrative Secretary, Ms. Shoemaker, if you'll please draw the first name out of the hat. That'll be Mr. Masterson. You'll be the first one to be interviewed. Okay, Sally, will you draw a second name? Please? That'll be Mr. Barbuto. And then the third person to be interviewed would be Ms. Jensen. So I would ask Mr. Barbuto and Ms. Jensen, if you please, and Sally will show you where you're at. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Shoemaker. With that, Commissioners, at this time, Mr. Masterson, are you comfortable enough to come forward to the podium? All right. The one thing I will ask, because we are on YouTube, is speak very closely to the mic. Adjust it if you need to, so it's comfortable for you. But the people on YouTube will need you to, in order to hear you've got to be really close. Commissioners, are you ready? All right, for our first candidate, Mr. Masterson. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Shanefield.
Thank you for coming before us today and for the information that you sent us over email.
Thanks for, thanks for reaching out.
Of course. So what are your, or what is your knowledge about what the roles and responsibility of the treasurer are? And how do you intend to be able to fill those?
They're minimal. And as I, as I wrote to you and Chairman Tolman, or Commissioner Tolman, I don't think of the three people here, I'm the best choice. I'm qualified. I met the, I meet the qualifications, which surprised me because I did this once with, when Mr. Devis was appointed. And there's an additional qualification in his position for being a property owner. And that became a problem with some, but you have some good choices in front of you. And I think I may be the third best. All right. Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Masterson, did any pressure from the, the committee or any of the other candidates to, not disparage, but downplay your interest in this at all?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tolman?
Yes, Mr. Masterson, you did accept the nomination to have your name submitted.
Correct.
Could you talk about, a little bit about your management experiences?
As I said in the letter, I was, I worked at, started out at Stauffer, it's now Jenner. I worked underground for 20 years, probably 15 years of that as a supervisor. Then, then they asked me to, to go to the surface temporarily, and that lasted 20 years. And I didn't, I don't think I officially supervised anybody then. You know, it was more team effort.
What's your education?
High school graduate, a lot of college, no degree in college.
Major in what?
Well, started out in English, then anthropology, and then into mine maintenance. Simple transition. Well, at the time, the, you know, working out at a mine, you got paid in six months, what you got in a year as a, as a teacher. And I enjoyed work. Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, Mr. Masterson. First of all, I appreciate, I was able to read your response from Commissioner Shanefield, and I appreciate your honesty. And I do want to warn the public that this is, this is the second time I've, I guess I've had the honor to make an appointment like this. And I thought the second time would be a little bit easier, but after a night of not sleeping, I, I decided it probably is just as difficult. But one thing I'll be doing a little bit different is I don't have as much information about all the candidates, which is a struggle. So my questions will be different for each candidate. So my question to you is, knowing that the letter you sent us basically said, I don't want this, and a lot, and, you know, I prefer these other two candidates. Why did you accept the nomination and not let the other fourth person that was clearly interested in the position come in to give us another choice when you weren't really interested in the position?
Well, in our meeting Thursday night, when we selected the three, voted on the three, I thought that since it is a partisan position, since it is the Democratic Party nominating this person, these three people, I felt that it was important that whoever was nominated was active in the Democratic Party, not just a D and, you know, just registered. And the people that voted took that to heart and voted for me.
Okay. And I guess the question I will, I will be asking everyone, I do have two questions. Number one is, what is your understanding of the ad valorem legislation? um, what is your understanding of the ad valorem legislation changes? Because I think that's a significant piece of this position. And, uh, so I guess what would be your knowledge of the ad valorem changes?
At this point, I have zero knowledge.
Okay. And if you were elected, do you have any intention, if we were to appoint you, would you have any intention of running again and, uh, putting your name into the May elections?
I'd rather doubt it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Schoenfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Masterson, do you have any accounting background, um, ordering, um, budgeting background with your experience out at OCI or Jenner?
Uh, sort of. Uh, Rita Ames was the, our head accountant out there and she, she taught me a whole lot about accounting, the D diagrams and all that. One of my primary jobs was, uh, writing reports for, uh, production and for the financials people. And it, you know, I, you learn a lot. I don't know if it, it would apply to this job at all, but, uh, you know, you should always learn something.
I agree. Thank you.
Other questions commissioners? Well, I guess I've got one.
Okay.
Probably, I, in my mind, probably as important as anything you've been asked. And that is, if this commission appoints you, will you take the position? Probably not. Thank you for being honest. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Lloyd.
Just a statement. Um, I'll just be honest, I, um, it's kind of a disappointment that we received a candidate that wouldn't take the position when there were others that were involved, just because I know I can understand the concept of wanting someone that was active in the party. But our job as a commission is to find the best person for that position. And having three candidates that would have been willing to take that position would have helped make our job and actually help fulfill what the constituents want, which is someone that's, and I, and like I said, the problem with this position is the qualifications are simple. Are you a resident of Sweetwater County? But we know there's a lot more to that. And I, I'll just be honest, it'd have been really awesome to have three folks that would have taken it because then it gives us a better choice to serve our constituents. And I do agree, um, we do have two other good candidates. But man, when you're making choices, it's always great to have, when you have three options, it'd have been great to have that third option. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you want to answer that or you just leave it there? Oh, I, I, I appreciate his concern. Now, actually, it, it would be easier if I was making a choice to pick between two rather than three, but that's me. Thank you. Other questions commissioners? Well, thank you, Mr. Masterson. You can have a chair and you can. Thank you. And, uh, sit through and wait for us. And thank you for listening. Thank you. If, um, Mr. Barbuto? Good morning, Mr. Barbuto.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm glad to be with you today.
Good. We're glad to have you. Uh, what we'll do now is the commission will have some interviewing questions for you and, uh, do the best you can with them and wish you the best of luck. And with that commissioners, I'll open the floor. This is Mr. Barbuto. Our second candidate for the treasurer's position. The floor is open for questions. Commissioner Schoenfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here today, Joe. Um, what is your knowledge about the roles and responsibility of the treasurer and how do you intend on filling those roles?
Sure. Um, thank you, Commissioner. Well, first of all, let me just say that being county commissioner, uh, county treasurer is not something that I ever thought about or, or aspired to in the past and not, and it wasn't until Mr. Slaughter talked to me in May that it even occurred to me that might be something I would do. But I have had lots of opportunities to discuss the position with him. And frankly, that nobody here, nobody, none of these nominees, I don't know who's behind me now, but probably nobody in this room really knows how to be a treasurer. There are some folks down in that office that do, of course, and Mr. Slaughter as well. Um, and that was a big part of my deliberation process as I took consideration as to whether or not this was a job I could successfully do. Um, I had to take into account that I've never been a treasurer. It's kind of a specialized position. But through my conversations with Mr. Slaughter and other people I, uh, trust and go to for advice often, it is clear that what the office needs is somebody who has leadership experience and skills, somebody who can communicate effectively. Somebody who has the capacity to learn the different facets, the different, uh, specific, specific points of the job. And someone who has integrity and I'm not a felon, I should add. Uh, but going back, I, looking at that, considering my own experience, talking to people again that I trust and know, um, I feel like that it's going to be a steep hill decline. There's going to be a steep learning curve for anybody who goes in the position, but I think that I have the capabilities to get there and be a good treasurer. And, and first and foremost, I think to make sure this is a smooth transition.
Thank you. More questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Joe, can you please outline your leadership skills? And I would also like to hear about any supervision history. As you've just mentioned, the folks that are in the office have been working there for a long time and they know how to do their jobs. And they need somebody that's going to have an understanding around leadership and supervision.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I call my leadership experience or my leader, well, let me start with my leadership style. It's very communicational. I like to make sure that those who I've supervised, um, know what my expectations are for them. But maybe even more importantly, in a position like this, a situation like this, that I know what their expectations are for me and that we're communicating regularly about what that might be. And that's how I've managed, uh, people in the past. As an operations director, I managed a staff of, um, anywhere from six to eight, depending on the month because of the nature of the, nature of the, um, organization at the time. And that's, that's what I did with them. They had a, a clear understanding of what was expected of them. And I knew what I needed to do for them as far as giving them the information, the resources and the knowledge that they need to be successful in their positions. If there was a problem, I wanted to, I've always wanted to bring that into the open right away. I find that if you discuss those things earlier, that you can usually, uh, spare a lot of damage that could be done later on. So I like to have that, um, conversation as soon as possible. If there's something that needs to be fixed, let's get it done and fix it. I, I, when I've been in supervisory position, so as operations director, as a chair, or when I've even just working with volunteers with past organizations or as a legislator, working with, um, interns and staff who, I, that was not necessarily their supervisor, but I had to work with effectively. I have always, uh, made it a goal to get to know them, understand them, know what their, their strengths and talents and abilities and knowledge and capabilities are. So that we're making sure we're leveraging that for the, the, uh, the best benefit of the organization or the office or whatever, um, it may be. And that when something happens where I need that specialized kind of information or knowledge or talent, I know exactly where to go. So, you know, something Rob said to me, Mr. Slaughter said to me in this was that, um, he felt like that office was a family. It was that important to him. He knew the people he worked with and he cared about them and their lives and their families. And I think that you can see the result of that in the, in the high quality of service that this county receives from that office and the people who work there.
Thank you. One more? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry. Um, Joe, do you have any supervision experience that's outside of politics, just in reviewing your resume that was submitted?
You know, uh, working in prevention, which I'm, I'm not sure on the resume, I worked a lot with, uh, groups of volunteers and occasionally when interns and, uh, or, or, um, temporary staff would come in, I'd be responsible for supervising them. In the consulting work I do, and I had, I just finished my most recent contract in, uh, at the end of June, beginning of July. Not supervisory, but responsible for making sure that compliance was met by the employees who were under the purview of this particular grant. So making sure that all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed so that they could, uh, receive the grant money first and foremost, but that we can make sure that they were always in, in compliance with what the state required for their jobs in career and technical education. So I mean, I couldn't go in and, uh, tell them, this is what I expect you to do as their boss. But as this, as a consultant, I was responsible for making sure that they did what they had to do and that, again, that I was communicating with them regularly and that they knew what was expected of them through the grant and through the state.
Okay, thank you. All questions? Okay, Commissioner Toman?
Uh, what is your, uh, educational background?
So interestingly enough, uh, I, in college, I studied music. I had, um, intended to be a musician and, and, uh, at one point it, it became pretty clear to me that there's not a whole lot of, um, openings for jazz pianists around the country, especially not here in Wyoming. And I didn't want to be a teacher, so it ended up that I did not, uh, pursue the, the education route for these, uh, music, uh, majors. Um, and so, and since then, my, the bulk of my professional experience has been in uh, nonprofit organizational leadership, development, fundraising, uh, communication, strategic planning, needs assessment, uh, development, things of that nature. So that was not really a product of my educational background at Northwest College at the University of Wyoming. But I did take things, of course, I learned in school and applied it to that when I could. But that's been most, a lot of my education's role, result though, has come from working in those sectors and in those positions.
Thank you.
What about your, um, financial, uh, experiences, uh, counting and, uh, investing?
Sure. Well, I mean, um, talking more basically is, uh, working in, in every nonprofit position I've held. Of course, I've had to be responsible for, um, responsible budgeting and bookkeeping and accounting. And that has been everywhere from a few thousand dollars to several hundred thousand dollars as a legislator responsible for budgeting and understanding a budget that's, you know, three billion dollars at the time or somewheres in that range. So I'm not a CPI, I'm not an accountant, but I do have experience following the money in this, in my most recent consulting job, that was a large part of it, is accounting for every penny of that grant, how it was spent, whether it was spent in compliance, um, if there were additional funds that needed to be allocated somewhere, or if there was a place where funds were going to be, uh, over allocated, which would happen occasionally, then it was my responsibility, first of all, to allocate necessary funds. And if there's an over allocation, then work on a way, find a way to, uh, a, a source of those additional dollars so that we remained in compliance, so that we remained in good standing with the grant.
Thank you, Joe. Any other questions? Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, um, um, Mr. Joe, um, I'll go Joe, is that okay?
Or Mr. Joe.
All right, Mr. Joe. Um, just a couple of questions. Uh, number one, um, if we appoint you or we don't appoint you, would you, what, would your intentions to be run for the, running for this office in May?
In, in.
No, next year for the next election?
Uh, if you were to appoint me to this position, then I, then my, uh, it would be in my intention to run in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. Um, a couple of specific questions. Um, and I think one of the nice things, um, with you, Joe, is I'm more familiar with you, Joe, and, um, and you were able to send a resume. So, um, a couple of specific questions is, um, number one would be, when you were a legislature, what do you think your biggest successes as a leader were? And how did that directly maybe contribute to the state of Wyoming and Sweetwater County?
Yeah. Uh, well, I think that something, I was particularly good as a legislator in that, um, you know, nothing came easy. I learned from mistakes like everybody else, but was learning to listen. That's a big part of leadership. And so, and making sure that I understood multiple perspectives before ever making a decision. Um, the things I'm proud of as far as legislative accomplishment goes, uh, one was, did impact Sweetwater County pretty directly, actually. It was how the appointment process goes for unaffiliated candidates in positions because there was really nothing, um, in statute at the time. And we'd had that situation in Sweetwater County where a, an unaffiliated, politically unaffiliated commissioner resigned and there was a process and, and it needed to be improved. That was the, that was what the word from the ground was after it all happened. It had nothing to do with the candidates who were chosen or anything else. It was just that the process needed to be improved. I worked with county clerks from all across the state and we were able to change that. So now in statute, there is a process. That's something, um, I co-sponsored with Senator Case from Fremont County that I'm particularly proud of too, is, it's called seclusion and restraint. Um, there was not anything on the books previously for educational providers, uh, when it came to how to restrain or se- seclude a student in the case of, um, that they needed to be, right? And it opened educators up to a lot of liability. And so what we did is pass the bill and this, and actually this, this impacted mostly, educators who are dealing with people living with developmental disabilities, students living with developmental disabilities. And so what this did, rather than give them a process, which wouldn't have been appropriate because neither Kale or myself were experts in the field, we, we created a bill that instructed school districts to work with people who are professionals in those fields to develop policies around that issue. And as a result, I mean, that's, that saved a lot of angst and sadness for families who are dealing with that sometimes. And it really protected educators in the state, which was important.
And one last question. Um, so the, I've been known sometimes to ask a tough question. So my question, Joe, is, um, you've ran for office multiple times and have come up on the short end. So, um, knowing that voters at times have not supported you, how, why would we appoint you in the past when maybe there hasn't been that same level of support?
Well, I mean, because you have run with me and I think, I hope it was a good experience. My wife reminded me of that. She goes, you know, you've run against all of them. But I think through that process, we've become friends. I know that I got to know several of you, um, that I didn't before. And I, and I think that's a testament to not just the county, but I hope that my campaigning style, I, I like to be collaborative. I like to work with people. I don't want to make enemies or burn the bridges. And I think, and I hope you know from that process too, going through that together, that I, um, I run a hard campaign. I do the work. I do the research. I go out there and I talk to people. I make sure that, uh, I'm, I'm hitting the pavement, knocking on doors and, and, and talking with the people on the ground with the voters. So, I, you know, nobody in the room probably understands the political demographics of the county better than me or have experienced the negative impact of that. That said, um, if you were to select me today, I would plan on doing those things I said before, you know, uh, practicing those leadership capabilities I have, communicating effectively with the staff, with other county, uh, employees and elected officials and the people I'd be serving. I'd be working always to be efficient, create organization and make sure that the high level of, um, high quality level of service that people have received from that office over the last, you know, thirty-three years and probably before that too, uh, remains the same as we go forward. And I would always act with integrity. And so I'll have it, if I run, I'll run as a Democrat. Obviously I'll have that D behind my name. Uh, but hopefully people will look at the job I've done. They'll look at the, the office and what it's accomplishing and think that that's a reason to reelect me. So I don't, I don't think it'll be easy, obviously, but I'm willing to put the work in to get it done and make the people of this county proud of their treasurer's office.
Well, thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Um, one last follow-up about your time in, um, the legislature. Um, while you were in the legislature, how many bills did you sponsor or co-sponsor?
I, I think over the four and some years, I probably sponsored, oh, I don't, I wouldn't have any idea how many I co-sponsored. That would be in the, in, in several digits. It's just kind of the nature of it. But personally sponsored, I would say that there's probably twelve to fifteen in there. I can't remember them all. Um, a lot of them focused on, uh, uh, family and, and, uh, family violence and abuse, um, election, some election issues, uh, creating some efficiencies in like the state board of education, things like that. All the bills I ever, I never really had a, things that I were passion project for me personally. I mean, it was usually somebody had come to me and said, this is really an issue where I live. This is what we need to deal with. And can you help us legislatively? That doesn't mean I didn't have passion about certain issues, but I really tried to represent the people in the district when they came to me and, and had issues they wanted to, um, address.
Other questions commissioners? First of all, I, I got to apologize, uh, Commissioner Smith had an emergency, personal emergency that he had to leave for. So he left rather quickly and that, so, uh, we're, he's being an excuse for the rest of this, uh, meeting. Um, with that, uh, my questions fall in place. It's a simple one. If you're appointed by this board, will you accept that position?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, then I can follow up with these questions because these types of things. Collective officials, a public servant. In your case, which is a little different than mine, you're responsible for an office, the treasurer's office. And many times in our responsibilities, we're expected to run the county effectively, efficiently, and when times are tough, lean. As if you were the treasurer, would you take the opportunity to identify things that could be done better to serve the people of this county? And if so, how would you do that? Have you thought about any of those things?
Yeah, I, I mean, like I, like I said before, Mr. Chairman, I think this is a very, uh, good office and I, you know, I know that from its reputation, but also my own interactions with it just as a citizen of Sweetwater County. So I think that there's always room for innovation. I think there's always room for, uh, uh, progress and positive change. And I think that Mr. Slaughter did that over the years too. I mean, we don't keep things stagnant. We always want to improve. And so that's something I would pursue. I think that right away, the first, um, the first at least thirty days, um, and up to sixty, you have to spend just getting to know the people, getting to know the office, getting to know the position, um, working with the different stakeholders in the, in the county and the community who you'll be visiting with. the county and the community who you'll be visiting with often. But yeah, I do think that there are things that can, there's always places you can find efficiencies, there's always places that you can find, uh, improvement. I think, you know, you guys probably know this about me, I'm big about community interaction and helping people, um, know what their elected officials do. And that's something I've thought about right away, is I would like to go to other communities and talk about what happens in the treasurer's office, what happens with their tax dollars when they come there and how they can be involved and take input from them, going to your question about how do you initiate change or where, where do you get ideas? Take questions and comments from them and maybe discuss with them some changes they'd like to see. I'd like to talk with all of you about those same kinds of issues because I'm sure you have ideas. I'm sure the Treasurer's Association and the other associations for county officers have visited these issues as well, and they might have some suggestions for things that have to be done. And probably the most important group you can be talking to, in this case, are the people down the hall who are working in there right now because they've been doing this job, some of them, as you've said, for, uh, you know, twenty-five plus years. And so they know that office in and out, and I'm sure that they've spent some, uh, fair amount of time considering what could be better, what could change. And, and I want to be the kind of supervisor like Mr. Slaughter was that can, will be open to that and, uh, really, uh, encourage those discussions.
Very good, thank you. Questions, any other questions, commissioners? Before I thank Mr. Barbuto. Mr. Barbuto, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very interesting.
Okay.
I'll ask you to please take a seat and then we'll have Ms. Jensen.
She's coming. Uh, the sheriff.
Yeah.
Hello. Thank you for, uh, waiting on us. And it's always the longest wait for the third candidate, but, uh, um, I hope you're ready. Ms. Jensen, you are, um, the third individual submitted by the Democratic Party for the treasurer's position. And at this time, I'd like to welcome you and, uh, and also open the floor for questions. Commissioners, starting out, Mr. Schoenfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Megan, for being here with us. What is your knowledge about the roles and responsibility of the treasurer and how do you feel like you would be able to fill those roles?
The best knowledge I have, I believe you can find in Wyoming statutes of the position. And that's where I'd go first. And then I'd obviously want to talk to whoever's working in that office to see what's going on there and how I can be best a service to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Any questions? Commissioner Tomlin or Commissioner Lloyd? Go ahead.
You can go first, Mary.
Commissioner Tomlin?
What is your educational background?
I do hold an associate's degree in political science from Western Wyoming Community College.
And how have you spent the last few years, what type of work have you done?
I currently own and operate a concrete company with my husband.
And what type of, do you have any, uh, financial or, um, accounting type of background?
I did briefly take some courses through a college in eastern part of the United States online for accounting. It was only two or three courses, so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, um, so Megan, originally you, um, didn't put in for this position, but you accepted the floor nomination. What made you decide to accept the floor nomination? And have you, had you previously thought about putting in for the position? Or what made you change your mind in that process?
Honestly, I didn't wake up any day in my life thinking I should be a county treasurer.
Okay.
Um, not one of those things where I'm like, hey, that sounds great. But, um, starting this process, when I was asking people to at least consider it because they would be amazing people for this position, they either told me they thought I should do it or to find somebody else. And so here I am.
Fair enough. Um, what kind of, uh, you talked about the concrete business you and your husband have, um, own, what other kind of past leadership experiences and management experiences do you have in your life?
My primary employment has been through food service. I have been in general manager for Taco John's and assistant manager at Arby's. I also spent seven years as head cook up here at the, well, not here, sorry, I'm in Green River, not in Rock Springs, but, um, for Rock Springs High School. And that was servicing around three thousand kids daily. So.
And, um, if you were elected to this position, would you run again in May? Well, and I, I keep saying May, but that's when we would be putting in. Would you be running again for the next election for this position if you were appointed?
Well, I, I guess it depends on the people in the office, see if they like me or not. Because ultimately, it's about them, I think, in this position also as far as constituents go. But definitely I'd like to talk to people in the office and see what they think at that point. And of course, my family, my husband is going to be very surprised if you guys do juice me today, my kids as well, so.
Those are the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other questions, commissioners?
I have a kind of a follow-up.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Megan. So it sounds like you have accounting background and being general manager, um, for those places as well as working with the concrete business and then, um, some supervision history in those as well, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, commissioners? I have one. Ms. Jensen. If this board of county commissioners appoint you, will you take that position?
Yes.
Thank you. Follow-up behind that question is, as you know, the county has been, over the years, been running mean and lean. In other words, really trying to be more efficient and trying to, uh, run on a bare-bones, um, budget. And at times even reducing, not rehiring, not reducing staff, but not rehiring in areas to where there may be, um, not necessary, you know, where people can still provide the services, but not with as many people. So there have been those reductions. My question to you is, um, as we move forward in the county and, and that type thing, are you, do you feel you're capable to look for efficient ways to run the treasurer's office? If positions weren't filled, uh, I can give you one exactly. We, the deputy position, as that person retired, we did not fill it. And business continued and our treasurer had to do some cross-training and that type of thing. But if it came to the point where position, one or two positions weren't rehired in that , um, office because of efficiency or that type of thing, would you be capable to make those adjustments and help retrain people and find ways to run and service the county in the same manner?
Well, I don't know if anybody up here has actually, um, been in fast food before. But a lot of times I did end up as a position for the sheer fact that people had walked off the job. And so you just have to deal with it.
Okay.
Ultimately, you would love to have the efficiency there and I would make every effort to make sure that it was there. But you deal with what you have and plus, that also comes from being a mother. I don't know, I hate to throw that in there, but it's true.
Very good. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other questions, commissioners? Any other questions? Okay, with that, I thank you for, um, waiting on us and providing us the information I hope that we need. Um, if you don't have any question for us, you can sit down. Thank you.
Can I ask one question?
Sure. I, I need to, I probably should, after you're done, offer the same question to Mr. Barbuto or anybody else, but go ahead.
Well, I, I, I just one comment, like, it was kind of weird for y'all to put us in a room and then lock the door. I literally had to make sure the windows were something I can get out of just in case. Just saying, because you never know.
Never know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Barbuto, did you have a comment after your interview?
I don't think I have any additional comments or questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Masterson?
None, none for me. But I did notice there was a difference in, in the last time there was an appointment to a position, which was, uh-
Would you, would you come up to the mic, please? Thank you.
I noticed when the county assessor was, was appointed, uh, the process was a little different. The, the three candidates didn't, weren't separated and leave the room while the others. We were all stayed in the same room. So I don't know, this might be better.
Okay, thank you.
We always think we do better.
Yeah, we do. I think I was on that commission at the time. So we're doing better, I hope. Okay, with that, uh, commissioners, uh, closing out the interviews and closing the, any question period. I guess at this point in time, without, uh, having a, um, official vote, because we can go to that, but, um, is there anybody, anybody would like to lead off with? Any one of the candidates? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, are you looking for comments or are you looking for, uh, what we're thinking decision-wise?
I, I, would you, let me go back up a minute, because you brought up a good statement. Is there any commissioner that'd like to comment on any of the interviews first?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Lloyd.
I think we would be remiss if we just didn't thank the three that put their name in and then also Mr. Gray, who wasn't nominated, um, um, because he did put it in at the beginning of the process. And anyone that dares to throw their hat into this concept called public service, um, because it is not the most thankful job at times, um, deserves, um, a thank you and a, a kudo for even attempting and looking at something, especially if it's out of your comfort zone and something you've never done or something you've done and are trying something new. So I want to thank all the candidates that put in for this process because it is a difficult process and it is nerve-wracking. You lose sleep, you wonder, you question it. And I just think, um, the appreciation of being willing to serve your, um, community is, um, needs to be thanked.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Schoenfield?
I just want to say that I, I like Commissioner Lloyd, we're, I'm pretty disappointed that the other person that put in and was clearly interested, didn't have the opportunity to come talk to us today. Um, and we were presented with somebody who's not clearly interested. Um, I think that that is contrary to the spirit of the, the whole process and that we really truly are here to try to find the best individual. But I also want to say thank you to the committee, um, for doing as much as they could to get people involved and being out there and talking to the community. Um, and I also just wanted to bring up that, um, I am going to be taking into consideration how, um, our community has voted in the past and also some work history on, you know, budgeting and things like that, um, within my opinion.
Thank you. Other comments, commissioners?
I'd just like to thank all three of you. I know it's a difficult process to have to be in front of us. We appreciate your involvement and your interest and we'll do our very best to pick the person we think has the most, the best experience to carry out the job.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any other comments? And I too thank you, all three candidates, coming forward and spending your time with us. And it's not going to be easy, I don't believe. So with that, uh, commissioners, uh, without a motion, I'd kind of like to know where your support's at to, um, or you could make a motion to appoint. And I would suggest, with a date to start, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lloyd?
I'm, I'm, I wonder if maybe that's, and maybe not, that was, shouldn't have been a question for Mr. Masterson, because he made it clear that he, you know, he really didn't want the position. But I almost wondered if that's a question we should have asked Mr. Barbuto. And, um, and, and Megan is, is when they would be able to start, um, and if they can meet, you know, and we can work with them, is I think, now that I think about it, that's probably an integral part.
Okay, I would ask that, Mr. Barbuto, please come to the microphone. And Mr. Lloyd, will you please reference your question?
If offered, if we were to select you, Mr., um, Joe, where would, when would you be able to start the position?
Sure, thank you, uh, commissioners. I think as I stated before, I have just finished up my most recent consulting contract, so I would be available to start right away.
Thank you, Mr. Barbuto. Ms. Jensen, will you come to the microphone, please? Mr. Commissioner Lloyd, your question, please?
Same question to you and, uh, Ms. Jensen, that would be, um, if, um, if we were to select you, when would you be able to start the position?
I'd really appreciate at least two weeks' notice because I need to find babysitting services and also probably start closing up shop on the concrete company because I am the other main person who does something, so.
Thank you. And I want to make it clear, I don't think that would affect the dates for me, that won't affect my decision making, it's more for us and making it as, if we were to pick and be able to select a date for the candidate, we could work with you is more why I wanted to know. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, you can sit down. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd, that was a good point. Okay, commissioners, I think in reality, we have two candidates before us.
I, I don't agree with that.
Oh, okay.
I believe we have three candidates who were willing to step forth, who provided qualifications, who came here and answered our questions, and I think it should be considered in that vein.
Good point. Good point. So I'll say we have three candidates before us. What's your pleasure, commissioners? Your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Lloyd?
Don't know if I'm ready to make a motion yet, but I, I do want to just draw out some of my general thoughts and maybe hear some of the general thoughts from my fellow commissioners and where they're feeling maybe in consensus, just to maybe get some different perspectives and different ways of how people are looking at it. And I, I'll just kick out some thoughts. I do agree, we do have three candidates. My fear is if I was to appoint Mr. Masterson, we would be doing this process again in two weeks because we wouldn't have a treasurer. That, that was my feeling from our interview. And why repeat the process a second time? Second is, I hope as a group, we can come to a consensus because I would rather us make the decision than if we can't come to consensus, have a judicial court judge make the decision. As far as the, the two candidates I would consider, I would, um, because I'll be honest, when we, we appointed Lauren and we had Ireland, I never considered John Coben an actual candidate, even though his name was there, because I wasn't going to aboutfire him. And, um, we listened to him, but the voters had really voted and that was the truth. And where I sit and David laughs, but it's the truth. And so I guess I, um, I know Joe and Megan, Megan in different levels and my interactions with Megan have always been very positive. And I didn't know a lot about her professionally until today, and I really appreciate knowing that. I knew Joe as a legislature and I've known him in the community for a lot of years and, and I do struggle with some of the election records and stuff, but I, I actually went into the committee, the treasurer's office and actually talked to employees and said, hey, where are you guys feeling? And, and I really think at this point, uh, there's two things that hit to my head. A, how do we create the smoothest transition and put someone that's kind of ready for that public service in there? And second, um, I'll be honest, I, I, whether I agree with the statement I'm about to make or not, we, we've lived in, the, the, the last elections have really shown a real strong Republican piece. And so I think this position could be short-term. And I, and I think finding a great transitional piece is the piece. And for my gut feeling, I feel, um, personally, I feel Joe was probably ready for the, the smoothest transition into that. I think Megan has some great qualifications and, and could do a good job also and would feel comfortable in her that role. But I think in a transitional piece, Joe makes the most sense to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd.
And it may be long-term, but I mean, getting into that position, I think Joe would make the most sense to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Next up? Go ahead, Joe.
Sure, thank you. Apologize for stepping out for a moment, um, but, uh, also appreciate, uh, Mr. Masterson and the maneuvering that the committee did to bring us the candidates that they did. I've known Joe, Joe for a while as well and feel very comfortable with his, uh, abilities and would also endorse him as, uh, as a, an excellent selection with, uh, also kudos to, uh, Ms. Jensen for stepping forward and, um, you know, having run for this office with no experience and no election experience ever before. It is, um, eye-opening and gut-wrenching. And remember on election night, hoping that I'd get ten votes, you know? I, I honestly didn't know if I'd get any and how embarrassing was that going to be? You know? So, um, as, as I watched him roll in, it was, it was, uh, exciting as well as just nerve-wracking. So thank you all for being here and for going through this process, which is not an easy one at all. I do appreciate that. And I guess I didn't, I didn't get to ask, uh, Aaron, are you on board with, uh, with Joe doing this? That, you know, that's really who we should be asking if, so, okay. All right. That, you know, that's really who we should be asking if, so, okay, all right. That's, that would, that would be my, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Either one, Commissioner Tomlin or Commissioner Shaneville?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Shaneville.
So as I already stated, I, I, I'm going to look back at actual job history and work history and um, I pulled our candidates that Megan and Joe um are both on LinkedIn and looked at their history, um, work history and as well as looking at Joe's um resume and I feel that Megan has um the accounting experience, the supervision experience, um, and she's held jobs for a long term. That's one thing that was concerning. Um, and Joe's work history is, I think, the longest um thing that he has on his um, his LinkedIn is political um careers and that's what the Democratic Party and then the state representative um things. Everything else is just around two and a half years is the longest. Um, and so that's concerning to me also. Um, I also really, I feel like our voters spoke clearly and they have been, and I think that that's something that I need to take into consideration because that's who I represent. So I am leaning towards Megan um as my, my vote.
Thank you. Commissioner Tomlin?
Well, I appreciate what all of you bring uh to the table and I know it was gonna, it was a tough process for you to have to go through. I like Joe's enthusiasm, you're, you're excited and, and you have a lot of energy and drive. I'm very disappointed, Mr. Masterson, you're, you're clearly the obvious choice. You agreed to do this, you have the leadership experience, you have the reporting experience, you have the financial experience. So you, you're my choice, I can't help it. I feel that, that if we take something forward to the county, to our citizens, you put your name in the hat. And I think you have an obligation to fulfill that obligation or else you should have withdrawn earlier. So I, I'll leave it there. Megan, I don't really know very much about you. I, I appreciate your work history, but I really don't personally know much about you. So I, I couldn't really say. Mr. Masterson, you're, you're the master. You stepped up. That's all I can say.
So you're going with Mr. Masterson?
My vote is for Mr. Masterson.
Well, just a minute, do I have to open the floor up? Attorney, I don't think so. No, I'm the chair, I'm gonna, I'm, we're in the middle of Commissioner discussion, I'm not going to open the floor up, I'm just gonna, this is our time. So sorry about that, Mr. Masterson. Um, so with that, I guess uh, I'm up. I can only echo everything everybody said, that type of thing and, and I know that uh with all three of the candidates and this type of thing, but uh I also respect Mr. Masterson's. No, because I'm not going to go through this again. I agree with you, Mary, I think Mr. Masterson would have been a very, very good choice. And uh, back in the colonial days, it would be do it or we're going to take your head off. But we're not in the colonial days anymore. Back then, we're going to operate that way. So uh, um, yeah, there's uh some things that need to probably take place, but they're out of our control. I'm looking at uh who can come in here into this county, hopefully work with the uh people that are in that office. Um, have the sense of uh, of to know that uh, that office is as good as people that are in it. And if you lean on those people, that office will run smoothly and it'll take it right to where it needs to be. And that type of thing, I, I can't, I've been around six years and in our elected offices, what we've asked our elected people to do, their offices are run very well. I uh sometimes wish that we could figure out a way to better serve our county people because there's times consistently at certain times, people have to wait. And I, there's a way that's got to be looked at that uh, that uh can assist in that because uh not only do they give us our tax money to run the county, they also give us our tax money to serve people efficiently and quickly, not stand in lines. So I'm, I'm really kind of, I'm looking in the direction of uh someone that can come in, someone that can work with people, someone that can look for ways to make the treasurer's office um run even more smooth to serve the people, and if that person walks in and says we're doing the best job possible, I can respect that. That person that comes in is an elected official as I am. Now, you're appointed, you have to run to get elected. But again, too, they carry the same weight, they're the same, they're elected just like I am and I need to respect what they are doing and how they run their office. Um, and that type of thing, and I think that becomes very important. And being a people person, I look for people, people to do what needs to be done. So I, since I can't have my way of, and Mary's way, for the right reasons, Mary, I am going to give my vote into the hat to Mr. Barbuto. I really sense there's a real strong desire, passion, um, and that type of thing, and I believe wholeheartedly that yes, the voters will, have been voting in the past. I believe when I look at the same things that, that Lauren's been looked at for Joey, I think Joey's probably, pardon me, I only know you as Joey. I'm sorry, it should be Joe or Mr. Barbuto. But I only have known you as Joey and, and you'll always be Joey to me. But anyhow, I, I just really feel that uh, um, if the voters are going to say they're going to have a say in November and that's where it's at. Up till now, it's our choice. And uh, wholeheartedly, you know what? If you don't like my choice or my decision, guess what? I'm up also, an ear and a half. And that doesn't bother me at all, but I am going to do my job. And the voters voted me in to make a decision that's best for that department. And I believe based on the candidates that we have and I, and I'll go back one more time, I can't have my way. Darn it, Mr. Masterson. But, let's go, I'm gonna throw my hat towards Joe. That's where it's at. So with that, Commissioners? I will entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Barbuto to the treasurer's office effective tomorrow. What's that date?
Twenty first.
Twenty first, July twenty first. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Smith?
I move that we appoint Mr. Joe Barbuto to fulfill the remainder of a the term of the county treasurer with a start date effective July twenty first, twenty twenty one.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith to appoint starting July twenty first. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd, any further discussion?
Um, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, two things, um, can we have him start tomorrow? Do we have to have a swearing in ceremony as appointed clarification and do we need to set that up before we have a start date? That might be a question for Mr. DeLeon.
There you go, Mr. DeLeon.
You can set up both tomorrow if you'd like. I mean, I don't know how you'd like to do that.
Okay.
Come in, but it'd be official once it's.
Okay.
Okay, so did I hear, we need to amend the motion? Nope, no, okay, don't need to, so.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion?
No, just one last comment at discussion and that's just um, um, I, I just, I hope in the future when we have positions, I know it was a little different when Mr. Devis was appointed years ago. The two candidates came forward that, that weren't interested, but we had a highly qualified candidate who had been in that position in Mr. Devis, and I think that's different at this time because we didn't have that outright person that had been in that office that was completely um, um, completely, that was qualified. I hope that whatever party that brings it to us will bring us three people that truly want to serve our community. And I know Mr. Masterson said, you know, I think it would be nicer to make two instead of one, but I believe in choice, that what's best for our constituents. And I believe we did our constituents wrong by not having three choices that would take the position, but I do feel strong that Mr. Barbuto would be the best transitional piece from Mr. Slaughter at this point. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd, any other discussion?
Welcome, Mr. Barbuto. Get to work.
All right, time for the question on the floor. And I'll call for a roll call vote. Motion was made by Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Lloyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes, in spite of Mr. Masterson.
Commissioner Shaneville?
No.
Commissioner Wenling, yes. We have a four one vote to approve. I'm going to do something that's probably never been done in the history of a Commissioner's room. But I do reserve the right, I believe by Roberts rules, that we do have a four one, which it passes. Is there any Commissioner that'd like to change their vote? Nobody like to change your vote? Motion passes four to one. Congratulations, Mr. Barbuto. He will be the inter, or he will be the, not the interim, he'll be the county treasurer, starting tomorrow, and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Mr. Masterson and Ms. Jensen for everything that they've put forth in the effort. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Now you can smile, right? All right, all right, Commissioners, uh, moving on, you need a break, anybody? No, okay. Moving on with our agenda, it's now time for Commissioner comments or reports. First up, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, try to be quick here and, and as brief as I can, um, with the hospital, um, good news from them, they have full accreditation from the joint commission. Uh, they passed with flying colors the recent um, survey that they have, so super excited about that. That's for you, Doc. That was easy. Uh, Candy Pendleton has also sworn as, as our newest um board member. Also, the central plant upgrade is, is complete, which has been worked on for quite a while, so good to hear that. Uh, interim financial audit was successful and the full audit will be coming in August. We also, uh, they met with Standard and Poor's, which uh gives them their bond rating. So they're going to get an update on that, they should know in the next three weeks what the bond rating is. And they're also looking at refinancing their existing debt to lower their interest rates, which uh, as we know with our financial conditions out there right now, interest rates are quite low. And then the Memorial Hospital uh Foundation Fundraising Golf Tournament is August fourteenth, so get out your clubs and swing away, do what you can, hit them long and straight. I didn't attend my other board meetings uh because I was out of town. Uh, fortunately though, they're coming up again here in the, the next week, this week and next week, so I will be attending those as well. Um, also, I was asked to um, serve on the governor's health task force regarding ambulance and was able to do that this past week. The meeting was from eight to four on Friday, but uh that was long, didn't need to be there for all of it, but um, got some things done and was very excited to have the state involved in our discussions regarding EMS. Um, although there was some hesitancy, to say the least, uh from the governor's office on how they could possibly help uh with ambulance. And so we tried to educate and help them on how they could do that and some good ideas came out of it. It's a work in progress and we'll be, um, we'll be meeting again in um next week, next week we'll meet. Um, and finally, anxious to stop by the fairgrounds tonight for the uh Escapade RV Club, eight hundred RVs out there hanging out. Um, so that's, that's pretty cool.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, so kudos to the crew out there for making that happen and um, just awesome to see after this last year that we've had to see that place full up again and looking forward greatly to the big show as well. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any questions for Commissioner Smith? Thank you for your report. Commissioner Shaneville?
He led right into my report.
I saw your notes and so I, I was looking at them.
Did you take notes off of them?
Uh huh, yeah.
Currently, almost eight hundred RV units. Um, so there are, there's currently almost eight hundred RV units out at the events complex ground along with a full house of vendors, which is awesome. Um, and I will be attending tonight as well. Um, we also have Fair coming up. So that starts with the four H exhibits on Saturday, July thirty first. Um, the concert series and the midway and all of that kicks off on Tuesday, August third. Um, all the information along with um full schedule, ticket pricing and everything is available at SweetwaterEvents.com. And um Candy wanted me to remind everybody that if you go on their website, you can get your tickets early and save money for that and you also don't have to wait in line to buy them, so that's great. Um, she also wanted me to share that she just returned from Tennessee, um where they met with the Airstream International Rally Team. Um, so another motor coach rally, and they've been working on soliciting that Airstream Rally since two thousand eighteen and now they're currently the final two destinations um for consideration um in the two thousand twenty-three rally, which is expected to have a thousand to twelve hundred units. Um, the rally would take place um near the fourth of July. And there's three members of their top management team that are going to be visiting the events complex um in September to make a decision. And then um Tamra from their office is also traveling to West Virginia this week um to attend the Newmark Country Club um International Rally, another one, which is awesome that they're bringing these folks into our community to spend their money here in Sweetwater County um and support our businesses. Um, so she is going to be the guest speaker um at a seminar highlighting the Newmark Country Club Rally um to be held on July eighteenth through the twenty-second um next year. So that um rally is going to bring approximately five hundred coaches, a hundred vendors and then fifty-five service technicians to the event. Um, and then the campground usage will also be used for their vendors and service techs um um along with five hundred plus motel, um hotel rooms to our community. So that's exciting. Um, the, I missed the museum meeting because I was out of town, I was actually driving back and didn't even have phone service, but um, they said that there was nothing additional on top of what I reported last time. And then we already heard a considerable amount from Kayla and Eric on SEDC. I'm just excited that we're working through our strategic planning um and updating that. Um, we're looking at how we could utilize those ARP funds and um after hearing a little bit from Representative Steph, we need to, I think, start working on some packaging around um what the needs in our community are and how can we present that to the governor's office in a similar way that we presented our community to um Rocky Mountain Power and Terra Power. Um, and again, great job, Kayla and team for the presentation that was put together for that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Shaneville? Okay, up next, Commissioner Tomlin?
Yes, along the federal agency uh front, we had our uh agency meeting uh the first Wednesday of the month. Things are moving at a crawl.
To say the least.
To say the least. Uh, the Rock Springs uh BLM Bureau of Land Management Plan. It has uh, it's the third time the alternatives have been changed. It has been up for review seven times. And maybe it'll be finalized this year, but there will be a shift, it will go from being a resource oriented plan to more of a conservation oriented plan. So that's with the Rock Springs BLM um Resource Management Plan that guides their uh actions for the next twenty, thirty, forty years. So hopefully one day it will be completed. Uh Biden's sixty day moratorium on oil and gas drilling has expired and it was challenged by a Louisiana court and it has been upheld, but I don't know what, where, where the process is now, if it's being appealed or if uh it's technically illegal for Biden to stop the oil and gas sales as he did in March and June. So I, I don't know what, what's going to happen, they didn't know what was going to happen there. At our agency meeting, the Ashley National Forest um Kurt Bowe here was there. Buckboard Water System is being replaced. The Gaiman Fish is paying for repairs to toilets at Anvil Draw, so that's latest on the gorge. I did attend planning and zoning, that was very enlightening about the solar rules and glad the legislature stepped up and did make some changes that will make that better, hopefully. We do have two solar uh operations, Raven Solar should be out by the end of the month, their, their uh environmental assessment for comment. Sweetwater Solar is requesting funding to open up the uh analog migration corridor. And since Wyoming three seventy-two is not a designated corridor for migration, there's no funding available at this time to uh have them move the fence back so those analog can get through there. And right now, it's kind of a bottleneck, uh, the, the Raven Solar will be right adjacent to that one, so I'm not sure how they're going to coordinate all of that. Uh, the Bureau of Land Management will uh uh continue Wild Horse Gathers or begin Wild Horse Gathers. Rock Springs is a priority area for the gathers this uh summer and fall. Ashley is onto the airport board. Well, that's always exciting and you heard most of that from Devon this morning. They will be coming out with a plan for the new septic system uh at their next meeting. Uh, the new snow blower is on its way from Norway, it, or it's not on its way yet, but it will be here in October. The Ashley National Forest will uh put their plan out for public comment, I believe August first. But some of the cooperators will be attending a meeting with them on July 29th in Vernal with our consultant, Richard Stam, who is a consultant for the Coalition, talking about some of the issues with Ashley. They are going to make the Flaming Gorge National Recreation Area a separate plan. They're not going to lump it in with their total forest plan as they had originally intended. Sublet Migration Quarter, I was contacted by Beth Callaway to be on that committee. There are five counties involved. They're creating a task force to work on developing the sublet migration quarter per the governor's migration quarter order. And it's going to be high speed, two full days in August, two full days in September to get this plan done. The bags plan has been done and I think one other one has been completed. So at least we have some ideas to to look at. So that is my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Toman? Just a quick question, Commissioner Toman. We received an email that I believe Lincoln County pulled out a CLG. Do you know anything about that?
They have not pulled out. They have paid their dues. They are going to pay their dues. They are simply not going to attend the meeting, sir.
Oh, is that right?
I don't quite understand all the issues there.
Yeah, well, and I know you got a meeting coming up and I know it'll be on Zoom, but part of that letter, would you, well, you'll find out what the liabilities they're talking about, what their liabilities are because there's something in there.
If they do pull out, they would probably have to pay part of our legal fees that have been incurred during the time they were members. But the last I heard from the chairman was they are not, they are going to pay their dues, so.
Okay, well, I was just, when we saw that, it was kind of just a what in the world's happening?
And they, that that group is meeting in Lyman on this Thursday.
Thursday, yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
It's mostly predecisional on all of the federal plans. The Coalition discusses those.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Commissioner Lloyd, you're up. Or if you, did you have a question?
No.
Okay, you're up.
I'll just start my comments with the CLG comment. Now, kind of learning about the UNA County and knowing that Kemmer has all, Lincoln County has also pulled out. I wondered if we should have it as a, an agenda item in the near future to discuss CLG in the future of CLG with some of those changes. I know Doc and Mary are highly active in that group, but it would be great to have that as a discussion point in the future, knowing that we've now seen some some change in the membership. So with that being said, for my liaison stuff, I had a chance to meet with Sheriff Grossnickel and Under Sheriff Love to take a look at the impound area and learn more about that process. And and it was, it's really good to see how great it's going, see how little the lot is and see the progress and the controls that are in place. So great job on that. As far as specific liaison stuff, I had a library board meeting last night. We did last Thursday have an open house and a donors reception for everyone to put in effort for the Children's Discovery Center, which is still showing high numbers. Last month it was down a little bit, but still had over 879 visitors at the Children's Discovery Center. They're kind of starting to open it up a little bit. It was by reservation only. And at times it is not full in reservations. They are allowing some free flow into it. And then they are full swing of programs. They had a magician last week in the park and they have, I think they have a puppet show coming up. And so lots of good stuff happening through the library. I did attend a star meeting and just thanked that committee and for letting me be their liaison for the last couple of years or putting up with me as their liaison over as how, depending on how you want to look at it. We are starting to gear up toward a change in their transit system and I'm really excited for that. And they've done a lot of good work and it's good to see Joe Zanetti reappointed to that board and him wanting to continue. Conservation District will have a meeting in the next couple of weeks. I didn't mention the last meeting and I should have that two and a half years ago, I was appointed to court security and I didn't have my first court court security meeting for various reasons until last month. And I should have reported on the last one, but we did have our court security meeting and started looking at issues and will be regularly meeting again now that we're past the COVID pieces and just discuss some of the concerns of the different courts and some of the trends that are going on and put together our court security plan to send to the state, which we did. I'll have my first golden hour meeting next week. I also will have a meeting coming up with for kind of Sixpenny related based upon some of the intergovernmental agency having a meeting regarding the possible municipal project they proposed in Rock Springs under the last Sixpenny regarding a recreational facility fieldhouse. And that's next Tuesday. We have that meeting. Outside of that, with Gary and HR, Gary mentioned it earlier, but we are going to be working on reviewing and renewing the entire policy manual. We will be getting dates and timelines of when that will be done. We've had personnel issues and different things we've talked about for grants. I actually have in parentheses, we've talked about lots. But we've been talking really about the recovery plan, business council grants and just our, and we've talked about the beginning, setting up toward the audit. Gene, we, everything seems to be going well with Gene. His report was sent to us, so I'm not going to review that. And then tonight I will also be joining and checking out and celebrating the escapees in town. I drove by the other day and it's like the sixth largest town in Wyoming out there. When you look at per capita numbers and RVs out there, it's pretty huge. And it's amazing the impact that that does have on our community, not only in bringing dollars of people in the community to spend it while they're here, but it brings people back. They come here, they get a taste of it, they want to see it, and I think those are positive things. So that's all I have for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions for Commissioner Lloyd?
No, but I would be, could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Purchasing, the intergovernmental group did issue bids for paper. And so thanks, shout out to Marty and her crew again. Thank you very much and for the cities participating.
Yeah, I think I think Marty's really, really put forth an effort to really make that particular purchasing group work. And they've responded very well, the two cities have. And my kudos to Marty and her staff for what's happening there. So thank you, Commissioner Toman.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm up. First thing I'd like to bring into my report is I'd like to talk about the two meetings that I was on last week. One was the Flaming Gorge Working Group. That was an emergency meeting interim. What do you smile for? You know what I'm going to do, don't you? And then on Friday, I was also invited to sit in on the governor's information center dealing with the Green River Basin and water. And that was facilitated by Beth Callaway as well as several other water people were there. But anyhow, here's what it's looking like. First of all, it's qualified as saying for water. The water has worsened deeply since January. What they're saying is the inflows, the amount of water going down to into Flaming Gorge into Fontanelle as well as going down river has worsened severely since January when they've made their forecasts. And it's resulted in planned releases from Flaming Gorge, which we've all probably, if anybody's been watching news, they're hearing about the regard, the gorge releases and water. The releases come as a result of what is called a drought response operation agreement. It's this agreement was agreed upon by states that they would put together a plan for protecting the infrastructure of power generation and economic of the power generation at Lake Powell. In other words, Lake Powell's being threatened because of the shortage of water that their generation system. If it doesn't get the rate raised up, it's going to be impacted severely as to how it works. For us, that means Flaming Gorge, based on its record of decision, is the body of water that can be called upon at any point in time to be shepherded down to Lake Powell for generation purposes. Now, it's Lake Powell fills to meet those needs and Lake Meads begins to drop, which it has continued to drop. It can call along, call on Lake Powell to shepherd water down. So their generation system can continue to operate. So its forecasts have sharp, have dropped sharply since January. Some of my notes include Lake Powell was in or Flaming Gorge inflows are forecasted in July at three three 353,000 acre feet. So that's for the month of July, but I'll read through just what the DRO, DROA, the drought response operation agreement for that's happening right now during the months of come on, there we go. During the months of, month of July, 13,000 acre feet are being great, came out of, coming out of Flaming Gorge in August, 47, 42,000 acre feet, September, 43,000 acre feet, October, 27,000 acre feet for a total of 125,000 acre feet of water out of Flaming Gorge by the end by the end of October. And that the question came up, why not wait until October, December and make a call for that water? The answer directly was, is you know, we feel we may be asking for more water this winter. So rather than we started to call it now rather than wait till in the fall. So they fully anticipated. Now, there's two other reservoirs that provide water for Lake Powell and that's Blue Mesa and the Navajo. And the Blue Mesa in August will send 14,000 acre feet. In September, 18,000 acre feet, and that's all that's being called there. And that's a total of 36,000. Out of the Navajo, in November, they'll take 10,000 acre feet and December, another 10,000 for a total of 20. So there'll be 100, 181,000 acre feet of water sent into Lake Powell by those three reservoirs that's planned right now. Could it increase? The answer is yes. But it's all dependent on the power generation at Lake Powell. So what does that mean? The anticipated releases for for the DROA volumes for Flaming Gorge in July, the maximum release will be 1,450 cubic feet per second. And the minimum will be 1,250 cubic feet per second. Then by August and September, it'll be increased up to 1,700 cubic feet per second in the flow. And 1,500 cubic feet per second will be the minimum. So it'll fluctuate in between over those two months. Then, of course, in October, 1,450 feet for the maximum and 1,250 feet for the minimum for the Flaming Gorge. One of the things of concern, the reason they're not pushing more volume of water down is bank erosion. They're worried about the bank erosion and also the extinct species of fish that are in that river. They've still got to protect those. So with that, that's what the releases are. Flaming Gorge operational changes, which I found very interesting. The release change on a daily average starting on 7/15, July 15th through July 20th. We started out with a total release of 910 feet on July 15th and increased at 50 cubic feet per second through July 23rd to a total of 1,310 cubic feet on July 23rd of this, of 2021. So that's how, what we'll see in their flows, how they increase over each day. What was so amazing is as we had the conversations with Flaming Gorge Working Group, it sounded like, well, they weren't going to do it right away. But by the end of the conversation, they said, as we speak, it started. On Friday with the governor's group, basically had the same information, same charts and everything. But they had already got together and said, it's already happening. So water through the Colorado River Basin, upper and lower, very serious as things continue. And there'll be a continued watch and could be a continued draw on Flaming Gorge. They reflected the idea that with the drawdown, it would only affect Flaming Gorge by four feet. I didn't get out there this weekend to look, but I've talked with a few people and there's more than four feet of water taken out of Flaming Gorge. And I will say recently. And if they're looking at taking more over the the next few months, you know, we'll have to watch it closely. But it's, it's started. They by 2020, 2025, I believe, Gene helped me out, is when the guidelines expire. Is that right? That are presently governing regulation water. So they've got to work on that. We all know that it's the the help me out, Gene, 2020 contract, water contract in 2020. Is that correct, John? Yeah. I think it was signed in 2020. The point being is, is the guidelines they want to revamp because they don't want to totally go back to those previous contracts from 2020 and that. So there, there's some work to be done, but we're in the loop. We're hearing about it. There's not too much talk about what is it you'd like to see done. It's more like, here's what we're doing. And here's what's happening. So much, let me share this comment is so often we believe that the water running down the Green River belongs to us. The water in the Green River belongs to the Bureau of Reclamation or the state. And the state contracts that water, their share from the Bureau of Reclamation. So the government controls that water that's going down. The 14% that is allocated to this area, I'll just say Sweetwater County. There's about 4% that isn't used. BOR could step in and redirect some of that water. So it's all basically the Bureau of Reclamation that controls water than the state has the contracts for the water that we have in the state of Wyoming. So it's a very interesting process that needs to be continued to watch. But if BOR decides to do something, they get to do it is what we're being told on, on our different meetings and stuff. So any questions on water? I'll just leave that one there. Go ahead, Mary.
I would just say on a, on a better note, Eden Valley and the Big Sandy Reservoir, they have continued to up the the allocation. Usually all the farmers get two point or two CFS and they, they started out at point five and went last week it went up to 1.5. And we probably will have water until the first week in August, maybe second week of August. It hurts the people with flood irrigation because you have to have a lot of water up front, but those on pivots can shut it on and off and continue to irrigate.
Yeah, and the nice thing about that.
They're going to work on that reservoir this winter.
Two things is, you know, that reservoir is designated for irrigation for crops. So there, I don't know what would happen if the BOR stepped in, if they could or anything. But the other aspect, like Commissioner Toman just said, is continue to work on it. And of course, there's a plan to raise that dam by six feet out there, which will increase storage for our farmers. So hopefully they don't have to start out with that point five. When it's done, it might be a whole lot better. So that is good news. That is good news. Thank you, Commissioner Toman. Anything else on water? Okay, let me look at my phone where I have my notes. Okay. Commissioners, I did also listen in on the Climb Wyoming 35th Anniversary, the virtual. Very, very well done. Yeah, I thought I saw your name on there, Lauren. Very, very well done by Climb for a virtual event to celebrate the 35th fifth anniversary. They had an hour of great information and, and great conversation of how Climb has helped all the communities throughout the state. And I think it's exemplary that their leadership continues to, to facilitate and make sure that Climb Wyoming survives. And as we all know, in this community, we have a very, very strong Climb Wyoming and, and especially appreciative of what's, what's occurred and, and that type of thing. We've even been fortunate enough to hire some of their employees in the county and that type of thing, who have been very, very excellent, good workers. And they've also worked very hard for other companies. So that was a really great event to be a part of. I'm going to pass down this document on I'm going to pass down this document on Resilient Federal Forest Act. I got an email from Bailey Brennan out of WCCA. She's the attorney and there is a, I forwarded to everybody, I had Sally do it this morning, this, there's legislative bill. If you look at it and feel comfortable with it, let me know. I'll notify WCCA and tell them that we can support this Forest Act as a commission and she'll pass it on. Also, I guess the thing I'd like to share, which most of you already know, is we did have four communities and the county support the general purpose, public safety initiative. Again, three quarter of ascent of that general for public safety and the other quarter percent for economic development, which is SCDC. The four towns and cities that supported it was Green River, Reliant, I'm sorry, Reliance is not in there. Superior, Wamsetter and Granger. Those were the four that supported that, I believe. The two that by resolution, the town of Rock Springs did not support it. And Barrow just decided they didn't want to even look at the resolution. So we have the 50% or better to endorse the initiative to move forward. The county supported it, which we know that already, which was necessary. And because it's public safety, primarily the ambulance and those types of services. I would ask Commissioner Smith if he'd continue to work with, on that initiative. And I'll continue to support it too, as two commissioners involved. I would encourage all the other commissioners to also keep an eye on it, be active with it as we begin to decide how to move forward. There'll be a meeting coming up through, which will, to get together the, the cities and towns and county. And what we want to do is be able to work on it and bring things back to our councils and our boards. So we will need to be real careful that a quorum isn't present. So just so you know, it's more of a quorum issue than anything else. So if by chance Jeff or I can't make it, we'll see if someone else can fill in for us. So we at least have two commissioners there and rotate it along so everybody can get a taste of what's happening. So anyhow, that's all good news moving forward. And the last thing is just to show you that I do listen carefully. There was a conversation in the, through the Commissioners dealing with water cooler versus plastic bottles of water. So I took that as the lead on that and asked Sally to find out what it would cost to put a water bottle in the front area out here by her office. And we've got a quote of, of based on two bottles of water per month. The startup for the first month would be 39.25 and each month after that, 30.75 for a total of $377.50. And my question to the Commissioners is, would you like us to move forward and put bottled water in? And no longer be participants of, or not bottled, but the big bulk water versus the little bottles?
Yes.
And you know, that means you'd have to bring your own bottle and fill it, which we can do. All right.
It's the cost to do these.
Yeah, huh?
What's the cost to do these?
Sally, what are the costs of those per case? About $4? We get about, I don't know, but you know, it's, it will be cheaper to stay with the bottles. I do know that.
This is cheaper?
Yeah, that's cheaper.
So it's a landfill issue?
It's a, yeah, okay. It's an environmental issue. So I don't know. What do you think, Roy?
About the same as I felt about the domain name change for our emails adding which one with GOV. I could go either way. I would prefer in the frugal sense of maintaining the best bargain in my opinion, but I'm really open to either concept.
Okay, Barry? Lauren?
I would like to save plastic, try to help the economy or help the environment a little bit.
Jeff?
I'm all for saving plastic trees, so I would go for the bulk.
I'm, I'm, I'm all in favor of protecting room in our landfill and making sure plastic bottles don't get out in our ocean and that type of thing. So I think just with that, Commissioners, I would, since it is a expenditure, entertain a motion that we approve the price.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our Public Works guy, Gene Legursky, was kind of signaling he may have a thought in this process and it would be good to hear from him.
Go ahead, sir.
That would be even better.
That would even be better. Would you, would you take out the water?
And the fountain? Have you seen those like at the airports?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, do that instead of the big one? Okay. Let's, I think we would just direct you to, as Public Works, to move in that direction. Did we leave you enough money in your budget to do it? We'll look at it, okay, make sure.
Budget amendment.
You can take it from the air conditioning, air conditioning budget.
That's not it. We've got to be better to him before we get air conditioning. Alrighty, let's go ahead. I like that idea. Let's change out those water fountains. Okay? All right, that'll take care of that. Sally, it looks like we're not going to put bottles in anymore or the big bottle. All right, with that, that concludes my report. Commissioners, any questions? What did I miss? Alrighty, moving forward now, it's executive session. We do have under contracts as well as their real estate. Are we still on real estate? All right, so what I'd like to do first is reverse those because I want to go into real estate. And then when we go into the contracts, I know it lists, lists UW extension, but I'd just like to share with the Commissioners that I think there's other contracts we need to look and talk about. And that type of thing as we move forward, okay? All right, I'll entertain a motion and go into executive session.
I'd so move.
So moved by Commissioner Lloyd is her second. Second by Commissioner Shane Field, all in favor, signify by saying aye.